They had a few seconds to run.
Yeah.
Yeah. My little girl's always like that. I have like an hour.
Our meeting everyone is five o'clock while we'll call the Hudsonville Public School Board of Education special meeting to order for March fourth of two thousand and twenty four. First up is approval of our agenda. So moved. From Dawn, support from Nick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
A post same sign. Recognition of visitors and hearing of people present.
Will be side up to speak.
Next up is our Michigan School Board Association Board Self Assessment Training. And I would like to welcome Frank and I cannot say your name.
I'm Philani, so.
Lillani, okay, I'm glad I just went to try. Welcome to our meeting.
Okay, we're gonna start with board self assessment, but one of the things I think, one of the greatest things that we've got that I make sure is part of my meetings is the, is what I'm gonna call the Pledge of Allegiance. To us, the reason we're all here is the ability to go ahead and we were all voted in. We're one of a few offices that doesn't say R, D, I, anything, we're all in here for one great thing and that's our kids. Right? And that's things that we get to find out ten years from now, it's not about what we do today, but it's about those kids are successful ten years from now, eleven years from now, twelve years from now, thirteen years from now. That's for the most part, so I, you guys join me in doing Pledge of Allegiance, greatly appreciate it. Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So, this is your evaluation, I have some norms I do with my meetings and first of all, as my wife says, sometimes we start talking, I start picking off. If I do that and she says I'm mumbling, if I'm mumbling, please let me know, can you, so I do work after that. My wife is a school teacher, so I get a lot of grief about the difference about how we look at things, so. My name is Frank Lillani, my past is, I was like the board president for eight years. I voluntarily stepped aside because I saw the politics that was getting involved with, with school boards and I decided I wanted the school board to have an opportunity to continue the great things we had going on. In my tenure as school board president, we consolidated down two schools. We went ahead and lost a lawsuit, which mostly we had heard about with the Janet Curtis incident for sexual, from sexual misconduct, which cost us a lot of students, maybe close to a hundred and fifty students. And in turn, probably about five million dollars because we didn't do things right. We weren't transparent, we weren't open, we didn't talk things out. Very, very costly. At the same time, it's the best time to get our stakeholders engaged, if there was one thing we learned is when people are angry, that's when the most, sometimes you can turn that anger into positive change. And we were able to look at our finances, consolidate it down and reduce our students to teacher ratio by doing that. Made it head, make, you know, we didn't make a lot of friends through it, had to have police at some of the meetings because of that, and on the news, tried to avoid the news as much as possible, you know, stuff like that. But one of the things I've learned is, is this is the best job in the whole world, so someone tells me that I don't like being on a school board, I'm going to tell them. I mean, to me, you're shaping kids' lives that again are ten, eleven, twelve years, it is about how many graduated. That's part of it, that's what state requires, but are they successful human beings in our definition, all of our definitions of successful human beings are different. Mine is, you get, if you're happy flipping burgers at McDonald's and that's what you do, that's fine. Someone has to do that, serve billions daily. And if you want to be a lawyer, doctor, or anything else, that's fine too. We just, that's the great thing about being in America, we got options galore of what we can or can't do. I'm also super involved in the vocations and CTE, I'm also involved with a couple of different boards as it relates to that as well. And I do all the church cooks, cooking for our church, so if there are two hundred, if anybody wants to come over and help me for two hundred people's pancakes in two weeks, you're more than welcome. So what I'm gonna do is, there's some meeting norms, I need a timekeeper, could I have a volunteer for a timekeeper? I believe in one, every one hour, we take a minute, we take ten minute break, I've sat here before and it is boring, it is long, and I want, I just need a volunteer, doesn't matter.
Right here, I'll do it.
Okay, so you gotta tell us when it is, that clock is, when it's six o'clock, we'll take ten minutes, so everybody stays engaged and can do what they need to do. Second thing, I mean, I'm gonna ask your participation, I see you sitting there not saying anything or not sharing, I will go ahead and call you and say, well Tommy, what'd you think of ours? I got Mark on this, and say, Mark, what do you think on this? Uh, just ensure, you, you hired me to do your self evaluation. So this is the board's evaluation, now the superintendent is the board's evaluation, it's what you guys feel are your strengths and weaknesses, or what you have and how to, and maybe we can come up some ideas, if we can come up with two, even one, then that's gonna help. Your meeting, your self evaluation, and cell phones and computers, I appreciate you putting away, uh, nothing drives me more nuts, I had board members that I would adjourn my meeting by, I'm not gonna adjourn it. But I'd say, hey, evidently we must have something more important going on right here, and evidently your cellphone must be, it's time to shut it out, so I am that person that has no problem putting people, because I'm spending my time three hours away, not three hours, forty miles away, and you guys are paying me to do this and I figure we gotta respect each other on that. Okay? Good? Okay, any questions about that so far? So, we're gonna start with, name the introduction, so tell me about yourself, so here's the questions I got. Name how long you've been on the board, because most of you guys already know it, but I kinda do, but, and then why you got on the board? And what do you hope to accomplish at the end of this work session? I'm gonna start with Mark.
My name is Mark Davis, I've been on the board decades, I don't really do know, so thirty years I've known that. On the board because I see the school district is critical to shaping the community, I think we need to reflect the community, but we also have a lot to do with shaping the community, because people, when they move, the first call they'll make will be to find out what's going on in the school district. I hope to accomplish some sense of cohesion and a purpose for moving ahead to the board.
All right, thank you. I always mix it up because you, because you think you're recalling, that's my calling.
Greg Chaniski, I've been on the board, this is my second year. I'm on the board because I was approached by several different people to run. I was concerned about some of the things that were going on, and I think this is a very excellent, um, running district when it comes to the dollars and the cents and all those types of things, the villages and those types of things, we're gonna do an impeccable job. I'm concerned about some of the moral issues that I've come across and so that's why I'm on the board.
Andrew. Andrew DeWitt, I've been on the board since.
Oh, hold on, what did you, I apologize, what do you wanna, I kinda pushed out the end of this work session.
At the end of this work session, um, I hope we're further along as a group than we are before, um, and we'll just, we'll just see where that goes.
Okay.
I, I.
So you have no expectations?
I, I said I hope we're further along than when we started.
Andrew DeWitt, I've been on the board since October twenty-two. I'm on the board because I have benefited deeply from this district all the way back to kindergarten, and I care very much so about our kids, about this district, its longevity, its success, and this is my way to hopefully contribute to that. What do I want to accomplish at the end of this, I'd like for us to build some consensus on things that we can all work together to improve upon. Um, I think that, over the time that I've been on the board, there's been some things that we can certainly do better, so hopefully by using this tool, we can understand what those things are and then put actionable plans in place to.
Thank you. All right.
I'm Gar Cooper, I've been on the board, I think about five years. Um, why I'm on the board, I love kids and I love to be able to make a difference and I want to be able to make a difference in the lives of the kids, so that they can grow up to be successful, it doesn't matter what they do, um, as long as people are happy. What do I hope to accomplish at the end of this work session? I think probably a few different things, how we can move ahead, how every board member can respect another board member's opinion. It doesn't mean that you have to agree with their opinion, but that you respect that individual. And I just find that something that's lacking is respect of another individual's opinion.
Thank you.
Uh, Nick Bolheys, I've been on the board for just over a year, came on the same time as Greg. Like Andrew, I'm born and raised in Hudsonville, proud Eagle, have benefited greatly by this community. And yeah, interesting times the last few years in our community and our world, and I, I thought, you know, maybe I have a skill set and a perspective that could, could be helpful to the board and to the district, because I have a passion for working with kids and, and shaping them, shaping their future, uh, much like you do. Tonight, I'm really interested to see how we all graded each other on a variety of things, one thing I've learned in my short time here is just different perspective, different ways of communication. And, you know, it could be a lack of respect sometimes, it could just be, I think we all communicate a little bit differently on this board. And if we can understand and appreciate our different communication styles maybe a little bit better, I think sometimes it maybe gets a little personal when it doesn't need to. And I think we can probably, uh, im- improve upon that and, and like I've said a few times, there's a lot of good things going on in this, this district and, uh, if we can chart a path forward, uh, we're in a really good spot.
Doug, just tell a little bit about your background.
I had Doug Enerjack Superintendent, that's my sixth year, finishing my sixth year of Hudsonville, I'm now on the board, um, thirty-second year in education.
Ken?
So Ken Hall, I've been on the board, I think about twenty years, um, it would take a little bit. While I'm on the board, I'm a huge believer in public education and, um, the services, the, the, um, what public education needs to provide to all students. And, um, only public education can do it the way that it really is, so I'm a huge advocate of that and, um, my own five kids are helping the district here, continuing on, um, um, with, with that goal, with that mission in mind. And, um, accomplishing by the end of the work session, so I hope for board self-reflection, um, by all board members and self, um, consideration, um, that leads to some common approaches and common goals that we can all take, uh, to move things forward.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Lance.
That's great. Last but least.
And, you know. I'm on the board just about fourteen years, um, my husband and I have been members of this community since we were born, so are our parents, so are our children, um, so when opportunity came to run, um, it was about continuing to be a part of this community, I care about this community and probably just as importantly, felt, um, really impressed that each child has amazing potential. And wanted to see that their potential was reached. And as far as what do I hope to accomplish at the end of this work session? I'd like to come up with one or two goals that we can all believe in as a way to move ourselves forward. I'd also like to see the door closed on a couple of friction points, um, that we've had over the last few years, and if we can close those friction points and come to some understanding, I think that would be helpful.
So just to get everybody's, uh, friction points, types of how different people communicate, respect each other's thoughts, you know, if they're different, you know, providing, you know, a lot of it, you guys talked about the kids and all that, that's the one thing I, I noticed that wasn't brought up as much as I've, as I've seen in the past and that, that kind of, it's kind of worrisome a little bit, because that's really what we're all here for. So, I thought, sometimes there's some things you gotta celebrate, so I go on your website, so I do a lot of research before I do any of these, so I go out, Google up and pay attention to what comes up, first, second, third, fourth, yes, I've watched the group on your board meetings. Yes, I've done profile checks, yes, I've gone, done all that, that's just what I do, I'm a salesperson, so I go ahead and I wanna know as much as I can about things before I come in, because I don't wanna, no surprises, I don't like surprises. Uh, but there's some really cool things I saw, in fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, you had some national blue ribbon schools. Twenty twenty graduating rate of a hundred percent, you guys all won, and that isn't, I guarantee your neighbors aren't that fortunate. That, that's unbelievable. Students going to higher education, four sixty-five percent, two-year college, seventeen, entering workforce, those are some phenomenal numbers, I know what ours look like. What I was even more impressed, oh, I missed a page, oh, oh, so hold on, I need to go here, okay, maybe it's not in there, okay, we'll go back. So the other thing that I saw in there was, I think you had seventy-seven percent, right, for going taking AP classes for college credit? Again, we were at thirty. And college credit, we weren't even doing the college credit thing, just to let you guys know, so that was pretty amazing. Plus you, if I'm not mistaken, I checked your webpage, you teach how many languages now?
Yeah.
You have, you had Chinese in there too, you had Chinese, and Spanish.
Chinese, German.
That's three.
English.
Then, wasn't there two types of Chinese, you were doing Mandarin, just Mandarin? That is awesome, and especially with our, because of the jobs that are coming here due to the healthcare professionals down in the medical mile, which we have a lot to be thankful for, that's helping grow these communities, along with battery plants are going over in Holland, another thing. I mean, you've got a diverse group of people rolling into your community, um. So, this, I found this out there and see if you guys can tell me whose it is. Mission of public schools is educate, challenge, and inspire all, I mean, highlight all, all, all learners to become contributing responsible members of global society. The public school district believes that all students can learn, all the schools district is committed to providing a challenging and engaging curriculum, effective instruction, positive supportive environment. The public school district realizes success will be achieved through a cooperative partnership, cooperative. Students, teachers, support staff, administrators, board members, parents committee, remember, highlight, cooperative. Great kids, exceptional stance, stand, outstanding results, just a few reasons, consider enrolling your kids in public schools, and I think Ken, you said that's why everybody should be in public schools, can anybody tell me whose this is?
Our.
Or it is? So I went out there and I looked at some of the stuff, what I saw, and there's some things that I think sometimes as board members we forget, we're there for the students to create an engaging thing for all students, um, that goes into the, to this next part. One of the things that it didn't show up here was, do any of you remember what your oath of office stated? Do any of you?
I don't remember the word for it. I know it's still hold the constitution.
Correct, it's all uphold the laws and, and of the state and US Constitution, it's all says, let's say anything else. So whether we like it or we don't like it, that's what you all took an oath for, there's something, so some things are very near and dear to my heart, is what you, is what you write down, it's how you act and what you speak, and words are powerful. When I write my name to something, that's powerful, that means I gave my word, handshake, I still do a lot of stuff on the handshake, or just, hey, okay, we got it handled, just because I know I gave my word. And when, to me, when you make an oath, that is the most strongest thing you can do, that means it doesn't matter how you think, what you think, that that's what it is. And sometimes we just got through the best experiment in the whole entire world, which I'm sure, how many of you are healthcare professionals in this room? How many of you are qualified to decide if we go to school or not go to school because there's some hires killing thousands of people somewhere else? And all of our strategic plans at most of the schools I've gone to have all been put aside. Oh, and then on top of that, how many of you have kitty litters in your school? Okay? But how many have heard about having kitty litter in their school? How many of you got pictures of kitty litter in their school? So those are two extremes that we've just gone through in the last four years, and so what's happened, I've seen a lot of boards get disjointed because they forgot what we're here for. And all of a sudden, we're, we're getting blasted by Fox and CNN. Can't get my hands far enough apart. Versus, we gotta do what's right for the kids, and again, you all made an oath of office, our goal in this, in, in our schools is that our role is to educate all students. That's what we got. Whether we like it or not, that's what we are. And we owe every education, I've seen it, it doesn't matter, you know, one of the positives that came out of COVID, how much funding did you get for school and education finally? To go ahead and hopefully get yourself out of some, you know, I've seen a lot of smaller districts get themselves in financial difficulty, and our, and some districts got to go get computers for the kids, that was like, that was, that was on their dream list and they don't even have to do that anymore. So for me, when we take that oath of office, that takes, when I take that oath of office, I'm gonna call it the four million dollar mistake and then we're gonna get into your board self-assessment. That oath of office is so strong to me that I watched, uh, we had a situation where someone didn't understand the role of the board and it cost us four million dollars. Because we made some bad decisions. Bad decisions. Because they didn't separate, didn't understand their oath of office. And if we would have understood this oath of office, we would have made everybody happy. And we were this close to calling it and basically, just in case you didn't notice, if the insurance company doesn't call it, all your property tax, all the people have to write a check within the next tax season to pay off, that would have been a bad thing. So, but it was a pretty learning experience. So let's get into self-assessment. So response scale, satisfactory, most of board members do not perform, ensure that factors with this question are done, needs improvement, uh, three, four, or five. I put up here your cluster analysis for two thousand and twenty-two, you had done this in two thousand and twenty-two. I thought it was good to see where you're at, where you were and where we're at now. Uh, evidently you did it in two thousand and sixteen, I didn't pull that one out, but I just wanted to let you guys see this, um, community engagement four point one-three, right?
You wanted to cover it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Good one, thank you.
Yes. So, this is where you guys were at in two thousand and twenty-two, leadership. Your academic performance accountability was a four, board responsibilities four point one-two, board effectiveness, and, and decision making, three point seven-eight, looks really good, pretty awesome, that's two thousand and twenty-two. Let's look at twenty today. So, we're still community engagement, we're not gonna spend a lot of time here. These are, these haven't changed that much, we'll get a little bit into that, but it's, uh, the two things that I saw would, you know, and you guys can see it too, leadership and board superintendent relation, leadership, you're a three point oh-seven, it's down to two point four-seven. And board superintendent relationship is down half, basically half point, six tenths, six tenths of a point two as well. That's the facts. I mean, so I just wanted you guys to see that, that's where you go, that's not a good trend usually, it shouldn't be going up. You mentioned about communication, even after you get done with this, and it, you know, after we get done, I would strongly suggest doing a DISC assessment in another work, in a work session. And the reason is, is, um, the DISC assessment, um, it can be done through MASP, it can do, it's not just this, and even, I'm a consultant, I have a full-time job, so I can do this on the side, this is not my full-time job, so. But the DISC assessment teaches you about how people, if they're dominator, dominant, influencers, status quo, just kinda compliant. But what it does, it helps you learn how each other, you know, I've done some exercises on that, it helps you understand, because, you know, one of the greatest things about this country is that we can all have differing thoughts and opinions. Or we can live in China, and, or you can live in Russia and get, you know, killed if you're at the prison, you know, poisoned or whatever else, or you're just going to arrest everybody that's at your, at the guy's funeral afterwards and just take care of the problem. Just get, you know, eventually, that's how you do it. Here, we're allowed to have differing thoughts, that's what makes the school board so great, in my opinion, because it does, again, when you write for opposite and say D, I, and R, or, or C, or whatever else you came with, it just says, I wanna be a school board member. We're like judges in a way, because we form opinions and ideas and direction. So, but we're gonna, so we'll get to your own cluster. So, so this is how it breaks down, in time, I don't spend a lot of time on here, but let's get over to your leadership. Clearly articulate mis- vision and mission for the statements for the district. Is there any of these that we can group together, um, that you see, can you consider community perspective of all stakeholders? Let's just start with that one first, I'll come back up there, articulate mission and vision, because how do you guys articulate vision and vision out?
Through the website mainly, and, and on some of our publications.
Do you read it at the beginning of each meeting? Could you?
It could be on all of our resumes.
But do you have the top, I think it's on the top. But do you read it? Do you believe it? That's what the difference is. Is it part of who you are? Because that's part of it, you, otherwise it's words, yeah, you put them on everything, oh, everybody knows what it is. Right? Everybody knows what it is because they read it out, but do they? Do you, I mean, how many times do you read something, or a book, or a phrase, or a verb, and you read it more and more and more and becomes who you are? You know what I mean? It just, it's kinda like e pluribus unum, or what's on, what's on the next one of this, isn't that a dollar bill? I think it's e pluribus, no, that's on something else. What's an e pluribus?
I think it's on quarters, right?
It's on a quarter, yeah, thank you. I don't want.
Or maybe one.
Yes. But there's certain things you read, I mean, but the only way you can be is how do you articulate? Think about what we just said, a group down, is that articulated? That's part of articulation. So what is the word verb articulate mean? Speak, act, express, it's more than written on a piece of paper. So we get done, you guys spent probably, I think you did it with MASP, you probably spent like six or seven weekends, you went through it all, much record things and said, hey, get over and put it on a piece of paper, isn't that great? But you were talking, Nick, about communication, that's part of articulation and communication, because when you read at each, beginning of each meeting, even as simple as us doing the Pledge of Allegiance, that's who we are. Because we have an opportunity to pick what our kid, that our kids are in our schools, all because of where we live. And we're not telling them at grade three that, by the way, you're gonna work at the factory. Any other ways you guys could see you could articulate your missions and vision?
How we act, by what we, this is, what we talk about is important to us, um, what we decide to fund.
And it's all about all students, because in your mission and vision, it says all students. So, I got the two here on community perspectives, I mean, those that said, you guys are doing a terrible job of looking at all, can you help me on that a little bit?
I think you hit on it to some degree in the beginning, you talked about the fact that the community is changing just as much by outside, I would say forces, but those in, because we have expanded, um, the businesses. We have expanded our families by not necessarily marrying someone who comes from West Michigan. Um, those are all ways in which people have joined our community that didn't live here, and that diversity is a great, um, picture of America, but it's also sometimes hard for people to change.
Is it scary, Tommy, guys, some of the thing, I mean, be honest with me, I mean, it's scared.
So I'm not from this area, um, and I, and I will state that when we moved here, uh, we are Catholic. And this is not a region that is heavily, heavily practices Catholicism. And my grandparents were, um, Christian informed, and my dad married a Catholic and was like disowned. So, uh, and they, and they pretty much did not do much with us growing up, so religion has always been kind of a touchy subject. So I remember when we moved here, I told my two boys who were, um, kindergarten and second grade, I told them, don't tell anyone you're Catholic because no one will play with you. So, so I, because I'm not from this area, and it is, it is.
How many remember when Hudsonville, you could have buy a liquor beer?
Yeah, I remember that. I remember going to my grandparents' Jensen and nothing was open on Sundays.
Did you grow up here?
Um, I've been here for four years.
Oh, but you don't remember that, I remember, I was. I mean, it was, I mean, that's just a sign of how things shake, I mean, Sunday liquor sales, that seems like the last place, I think, in the whole state, and I, and I'm not trying to get out, but this is the last place that ever changed.
I've been living the last, I've been here now sixteen years, and it's been for the last sixteen years.
But, but it tells you how, what I'm telling you is outside influence in the globe that this area. But, but it tells you how, what I'm telling you is outside influence in the growth that this area has had. I remember, I worked for Spartan Stores years ago, and I used, this was all farmland, I, I got dropped off on my directions here, I was over at the Christian school, I go, I don't think I'm supposed to be, I know it's, I'm close, so I went around two more miles, found the new, you know, I found the new high school and come back around, and then I got back here again. Cause I was thinking, oh my gosh, here we go again. I did that in the school district up by Muskegon, and I ended up at the landfill. To take the center spot of the district. So, but there's been a lot of changes here, and so, that's why I was asking, so what do you guys mean by not looking at all community perspectives? Speak up, I mean, this is, this is the weakest part in this whole thing, you know, and that's why we're starting on this section, I could go to easy stuff, and that's really easy, but.
For me, I think, I, I, I think people have thought that outside groups have influenced my decision-making, when in fact, I've done my research. And so I have based my votes on the research that I have done. I don't let people influence me, yes, people talk to me, but I look at the research. Talk to people. So, I, I don't let people influence me.
I, I think we have a, a very passionate community here, a strong ownership of our community, and that, I think, is a very positive thing. It's, it's a different environment, though, I mean, we've got two recordings going on of this meeting right now.
Oh, yeah, trust me, oh, yeah, I know.
So a lot of the work that was probably done back in the day, in a work session, nobody even knew about. You could talk freely, you could have open, honest, uh, disagreements on things, but you didn't have dozens of people watching it and commenting on it real time. So there's, uh, the, the curtains been pulled back a little bit, so some of this maybe isn't new, we're just all aware of it.
Well, that's, that's all changed everything, I, I firmly believe that.
So, some folks on this board, and this is not a negative, didn't sign up for that.
No, I, I, I agree.
And, and, and for others on us, we're, maybe we're crazy for signing up for it, I don't know, you know, cause we came in after that all started. So just the dynamics have changed in how you communicate, and how you lead, and I think it's a learning process. And one of the big things I'm, I'm trying to learn here every day is to kinda be gracious with everybody, because once you sit in the seat, it's a different perspective than the seats back there or at home.
And I'd like to broaden that word, cause there's a lot, that's, that's something I usually bring up a lot, about how can we grace, graciously do it, because people can always take a recording and just only hear that sign, sound bit, cause even through some of the ones I listen to, that I got a really like YouTube situated thing on my, on my computer, I can't even hear three-quarters of the stuff that's happening. So I can't hear, I can only imagine everybody else isn't hearing about everything else either. So you only pick up the spots when the lot, when the voices get loud, you know, and you don't hear the rest of it, so that, that makes a big difference.
So, again, not good, bad, other ways, it's just different, and you argue really well that, hey, it's good for everybody to see what goes on. But, yeah, there's work that goes into these decisions, cause they're so important, and I, everybody sitting here cares, and maybe we didn't say it enough at the beginning, but I, I honestly believe all seven of us are here because we care a lot about our kids and our community, and we just love what's best for them. Several of us are, you're, you're the most proud Hudsonville Eagle ever gone, and, uh, we just want.
We got grandkids in school too, right?
Well, it's mine aren't in Hudsonville, yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I think it's just so important for us to, to get on the same, same page on some things, because, um, there's, there's so much good going on already that we can accomplish even more.
And, and like you said, I think when you go at community perspective of all stakeholders, it's how do we, it's again, goes back to that thing, how do we support all students? And it's just, it's the all thing, that's what you signed up for. I mean, that's what states in the co- in the constitution is free publics, public education, that's, that's part of who we are as a country and who we are as a state. Doesn't matter, it's, and that's what it is, it's all. And, and it's tough, and, and I don't wanna say it's not tough, because, you know, we all are different individuals and different people, but we made a, we made an oath of office, and that's, that's where it's at, and it's, it's tough, cause it plays against some things that we believe to, so.
And there are, there are differing opinions in the community, honestly, and one of our challenges as a board is to, is to take those differing opinions. And then, as you said, Frank, to, to craft those into, okay, what, what do we think, given the collective, you know, interest of this board on doing what's right for all students, but how do we craft that into all students, when, when there are different opinions, when there are different perspectives, when there are, you know, as a, as a indicator of our, our society in general, and, um, so it's part of our challenge to, to craft those.
And it is, and I know there's, there, there's no easy way, other than, listen with respect, we're, I'm gonna jump a little bit, and, and I was gonna bring it up earlier, so M A S B tells you not to comment when people make, when they come up and talk, okay? I've been, they, they give me the blessing, I've been telling more and more people, people wanna be heard, they wanna hear their voice, and so the standard school board thing, we don't say anything, those are the things they say. The one of the things I think that we have to do as people, because it's, it has created the Facebook problems, where I can post anything, it has created, I can go look at, I can watch five minutes of, of, of your video, and I'll only get part of the story, it'll get the whole story. And trust me, I did, and I watched three meetings, you guys have really long meetings. So, uh, I liked the policy meeting, that was really good. But, what hap, what you need to do when people talk, and if it's about the same issue, then group it together, say, thank you for taking the time, understand to come and address the board, I know it's tough to talk here, because we're not gonna respond to you, we're not gonna solution, but we take those comments all very seriously, and we're trying to meet all the, all of your needs. Versus, okay, on agenda number one, we got this here. How would you feel as a student, uh, better yet, how would your kid feel? Hey, look at this, I just hit a homerun. And you just said, I gotta go, I can't, I'm on my phone, I'm doing this, or I'm doing that. So what I'm saying, you don't have to solve the issue, but address it, thank you, we heard you, we take some of these words you say to us to heart. We got it, we're trying to change, we're gonna be, do the best for the Hudsonville School District. You do that enough? You know, that means you're listening, does that mean, whoever your spokesperson is, but it calms the room down, but also that you respected them, or that individual. You just address, you know, you can group it together, I mean, but that was, it, it sets the tone a little bit better, that we're, we're working together as a team. I know what M A S B, I mean, I've sat through enough of those, and I don't say anything, but when I was having twenty of them come up at a time, and I'm going, oh my gosh, and I've seen other people, and you gotta, you gotta, cause what it does, it just set the whole mean, it, it, it just set the whole tone for the rest of the meeting. It just, you could have been all happy, and you just sit there, what the heck, what are you guys gonna pay, ten bucks a meeting? You know, or some districts are free, you know, and I'm going, oh my gosh, it's a free job, you paid for your election, you don't have to pay to get elected, you know, for your campaign signs and all that stuff. But by acknowledging what that person can't talk, you're not, you're just saying, thank you for coming to talk to us. It, it, you give us a, thank you for giving us your perspective. But it's science shows aside, or, cause what's happening today, all I gotta do, you got Facebook?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So how long, how much time you spend on it?
Uh, not very much, I'm just a lawyer.
Okay, so lawyer, okay, hey, thanks for your honesty. So, but how many people go ahead, because they don't have to, they don't get a response back, they'll, they'll just trash you. Right? How many people get trashed on Facebook, you know, and, because they don't have to face anything, how many times have you been trashed on Facebook? Oh, see, okay, there's, see, there's, soup's dull. But, because they don't get a response back, I, I've got a couple of districts where the superintendent, the board president would call back if someone ditched, ditched out a school, they would go ahead and call them up, hey, I understand you got a problem with us, you see you posted on Facebook. Oh my gosh, what a change. That person doesn't know what to say. Hey, let's talk about it, come in the office, talk to the soup and I, let's talk about it, let's address it. You got some concerns, let's, let's get it out in the open. And then you start calling stuff down, what happens is, people aren't, you know, so what happens is people, when they don't get a response, what do you think your response is gonna be? Does that make sense?
It's a very interesting perspective to have, because that actually has been a point of conversation here, where, yeah, there's different groups, different, you know, different groups, different worldviews. And, uh, part of the contention on the board is, oh, after meetings, you're going up and talking to that group, or that group in the parking lot. I personally scared to death to, to talk to anybody at this point, neither the person at the door, I guess. So, they can't, yeah, well, I wanna talk to anybody.
How fast did you get there today?
But, but again, because that's the directive from M A S B, and just, yeah, we don't wanna have them news, you know, we've all seen that.
Yeah, we have to start treating people with, they got up to speak to us, you gotta be, uh, offering the courtesy with a response. And you don't wanna be canned, you, it comes from the heart, I mean, I believe it, I watched some of your meeting, but I'm watching you guys, and it just changed the whole tone of your meeting, it just goes, went like, geez, we just got trashed on again today, you know, and, and how, you know, so if you address, by doing that on a consistent basis, you're treating them like a human being, they treat you like a human being. You might find out that some of the stuff you do might get changed, but they rest, they respect you, cause it's, you recognize more than just them, hey, because I filled out this speech paper, I got to speak at your board meeting.
Frank, what do you, what do you, I, I personally think this is a great idea, there was, uh,
I do CBA one-on-one, I bring it up for you.
A year and a half or two years ago, there was someone that, that got up to speak, that literally gave inaccurate information. And it wasn't addressed, and I felt very uncomfortable, cause I thought, everyone in that room thinks this is true, and it's not true. It was about the book that they were seeing me have in the district, and, and we didn't have it, and I thought, they, they left, and because it wasn't addressed, I thought, everyone thinks we have this in the district.
So I've seen where some boards, where this works out, and just say, hey, thanks for, again, it wasn't true. We're gonna go ahead, you know, look over at this guy here, we'll look into it, we'll have an answer to you by a week, I'm not sure about all the details.
But what do we do with, what do we do with people that, when they get up for their public comments, all they do is talk negative about board members? It's not about a particular policy necessarily, it's just really how bad you are.
And that's why I'm telling you, I watched, how many of those you got? I'm just, we're not supposed to talk about our own district, I have the same problem, so, I, I just, and so I started doing it that way, you know, what happened is, we started calming, we started calming it down, because what's become, you become the Facebook of Hudsonville Public Schools. You know, so now they can just make their comments, and they know you're gonna, and what the difference is, is by saying, thank you for taking the time, we're trying to get better. We know we got a lot to learn, but we're trying to do the best for all kids. And some things, like on that book, that, that's an action that goes over, hey, you know, hey, I'm just gonna talk to, you know, Doug, and he was gonna look into it, you know, we, I understand your concern, you know, but, you know, that's all you do, but thank you for bringing our attention, this could exist, that's it. You don't have to make, I mean, it isn't about making a mo, a mountain of a molehill, but it addresses that you actually recognize that. Cause what happens, once you start doing it because of who you are, and they understand you're compassionate, caring, and you're not, now let's go to item number one. What's the rest of, okay, how do we think about the consent agenda today?
You're saying it's okay, because we've always been told.
Oh, I know, you've always been told, I, I knew this in my, so I do CBA one-on-one, I do CBA one-on-one, and I do affect a board, soup, you know, what a policy of affect a board. So I do that too, I've been doing all, um, you gotta address, you have to, because it's no different than a consent, you know, and you do it with respect, just say, thank you for bringing up, we're trying our best, we're brand new, we've done this for two years, and what it does, it puts a human side to you too.
Recommend doing that after everyone speaks, or?
No, if you got a group all talking about the same thing, that'd be, and you just, you mentioned, and all, whoever, whoever it was, it was Johnny, Sue, Sally, and Barb, all talked about the same thing, Johnny, Sue, Sally, and Barb. Thank you very much for taking the opportunity to come and talk to us, I know it takes a lot of courage to do that, and it's really hard for us to sit here and listen. But, we hope to do better, we're trying to do better, and we wanna make, keep Hudson Schools be a place where all kids can come to learn. Does that make sense? But you guys are getting just beat on, holy jeez. All I had to do is watch the first twenty minutes, I'm like, the first five.
It's not better than it was.
Whoa! I was one of those people on the board that loved conflict, this is, I loved it when people came and talked, it was just, you know, we had one guy that was great for closed session stuff, cause we had, you know, kids, he, he had a past, uh, he had a past history with drug abuse and alcohol abuse and, and missing school, and what an amazing story, successful human being today, but every time we had a behavior issue and that, when we closed up, and he got to talk, cause he couldn't, he just expressed it the best, and I couldn't. But it was like, it was just, it was just amazing watching, it was even cool, and the kids would come back and get reinstated because they listened to what he said. That was just, you know, I had, one of those life-changing people, and I could just make it work, so. But that would help your community perspectives, cause I know what they are, I mean, I don't know. Um, it's the auto impact, uh, it's meetings separately outside of buildings, it's having separate meetings, or you talk to somebody, I saw you talk to somebody, you're probably just missing the photos. But, the idea is, what's hard when you're in this school board thing, you, you lose a lot of friends, trust me, I, I don't talk to three-quarters of people I used to, just cause they don't like my decisions. I'm a compartmentalizer or something. So, and that's what you gotta do on school board too, is compartmentalize some of that, so, it helps. You have fifty-five hundred students, do you think you're gonna keep them all happy? Yeah, and that's probably, well, there's probably fifty-five hundred parents in that group?
Yeah, we're sixty-eight hundred.
Sixty, oh, I, you gotta update that, that webpage.
It said sixty-eight hundred.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, I should have remembered that. You have over a thousand staff?
Total.
Holy jeez. Wow. And I used to say a hundred. That's a little bit different world. So that's one thing, what's other things you guys think you could do, you know, for community perspective, cause you guys did the sword thing. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, and you guys are pretty diligent, I saw on your, on your values and that. But how would you go ahead, I mean, that's, you know, how do you, how do you, the board engage? You know, in such, you know, events, by being at events, you know, I wasn't a sports dude, but I had other people go to that, I went to all the football games, but I was a fine arts sport person that just went to all the stuff, but you know, the more you get to stuff, or coffee, coffee, and you know, more visible you are, you can't sit in your office all day. You know, once in a while, go to the favorite coffee shop down the road here, you know, and just be, you know, sit there, and hopefully someone wants to come and have a cup of coffee, or buy somebody a cup of coffee. You know, make, make friends with a bunch of people sitting around taking all of that, you know, or I'll have a coffee, and find out that, but hear everything you always wanted to hear, didn't wanna hear. But if you engage and be, now, how, 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 how engaged are you guys with events and all that? Someone got, you gotta recognize that the one thing you're doing, right? You were, you were, what are you doing? Doing, probably. For wrestling, was it wrestling?
Oh, wrestling, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wrestling.
I think it's always been up to the individuals prior to the last little bit, whether you attended or don't attend, and now, just recently, we did sort of, through some of our review of the code of conduct and some of the other things, on this area of how do we be more visible, how do we be out there, um, listening, not in a formal setting? Some of us have deliberately set up times and places that we're going to be, um, to facilitate that, so I think we're making some progress.
Some of it's just being, being seen, you know, and, you know, and that one, hey, tell me what you think everything's wrong with the school today, that isn't what we're, we're thinking about, I mean, you got methods out in place for that.
We got a, a culture, uh, and that's been promoted by, um, Doug and previous superintendent, so it's, it's okay to just pop into a school. And, um, just to say hi, and how to walk around, and be in your classroom, and, and this is Richard, the principal, you don't know what's going on in his or her building, but, um, that, that welcomingness, that, that openness to.
How many of you done it? But if you can, I mean, if you could set a goal of doing it X amount of time, I mean, it's just, and again, be open, serve lunch for the day to a bunch of. for the day, it's a bunch of little lunchkins runnin' by, you know, it just, it just, that observation, people see you care about the kids, it's what you can do without fighting or stuff like that.
I I think it's it's those small things, right?
Yeah, it's all small things.
We can't solve everything in one minute.
It's all small things, it's all small things, it's all challenge ourselves.
Yeah, and 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 part of it though, you you have to build that relationship too, cause I always wanna be mindful of, I don't know, so-and-so principal in the building. The last thing they probably want is a board member showing up, cause it's like at work, your boss's boss is showing up, you know.
Yeah, or have two of them show up at the same time.
Yeah, so I mean, there's just that fine line, I wanna show respect to them and and their school and 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 all of that, so the buildings I'm more out to stop in, I have a relationship with them that has been cultivated over time.
And it's not, it just, yeah.
I, if if I can just make comment, I don't know if that is always necessarily supported.
Okay.
That board members communicate with principals and. I I don't know if that is always openly supported.
But I,
I can, I can read your comment, but.
I I don't know if it's always openly supported.
But but I think there's two different way, I I would probably call, hey, can so-and-so, I already got, I didn't say, hey, can I, you know, do it that way in council room, cause you know, otherwise you got everybody, and I can, if you just wanna observe, that's all, all we're doing, we're doing, it's called M B W A, management by wandering around, it's not by, i- it's not by, you know, finding fault, it's just to be seen, you know.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
But I think it's a great opportunity to even collaborate, and to go with leadership as you may under about.
Right, because when you're sitting here, it gives you a better idea, cause you might find out that, you know, hey, we were kinda long, and that, you know, we're getting involved in stuff that, and we already got a great program, we don't really change it. You know? But I think if you work through, you don't want everybody just jumping, hey, man, I don't see you school, cause that's what hap, I've seen some schools do that, makes it all three board members show up, and oh, and you, so. I know, when I've done, I've seen some do facility walkthroughs, for the board to really understand the need to do the improvements that need to be done, all because of situations, and that was one of those op, that was one of those opportunities. It's very tough, because you, we all only have one, you know, you all have only one employee, that's him, that's Doug, and it's about the methods. Cause I just started doing, teaching a superintendent evaluation, and one of the guys I watched and 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 basically, um, shadowed, he kept bringing up methods, so what is the method that you would want to go about that, so it's something you always gonna learn. And then you just stick to the method, I mean, that that way you don't always run out there creating your own art, creating your own armies and stuff like that. Cause one thing you'll find out, you look at the, and you're sitting everywhere, you just ask, everybody's actually. So, you three are really quiet here, really quiet.
I was waiting for that. Now, I think, so on all of this, I think, our, the makeup of our board, the makeup of our community is a reflection of our society, right, and I know I'm gonna kinda get off base a little bit here, but this aligns, I think, with number two, uh, three, maybe four, I mean, like, we've already said, work, this district looks a lot different now than it did fifteen years ago. Our country looks a lot different than it did fifteen years ago, and, um, I think in a world where you know, the the topic that gets the most clicks is the most important one to think about, or to talk about. It's easy for us, even as a board who lives by our mission statement, it's easy for us to get caught up into that. And I think that as a, as a board, it's our responsibility to to rise above that, way easier said than done, but I think there are groups, there are individuals within this community that would really love to see that divide.
Oh, yeah.
They would really love to see people picking sides on everything, they would love to see people disagree, and 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 we, we all hear it as board members. Right, like, oh, Ken said this at a board meeting, like, that's horrible, why, you know, how can you sit on a board, right, like, it happens all the time. And, um, so when it comes to for community perspectives, and for of all stakeholder groups, I think that sometimes we give the stakeholder groups that have allowed us the most attention, just like we do in society, and that's a, I think, a fundamental issue that we're not gonna fix probably this term tonight, this is the reunion.
It's quicky wheel gets very strict all the time, and what happens is we get caught up in this stuff. Again, it's the students that matter, it's not
Right.
all the other stuff.
Sure.
Again, it's, you know, I really wish that M staff would teach what that student that that barely passed would teach, tell me where they were at ten years from now, that to me is what you're accountable for, being, raising successful human beings ten years from now.
Sure.
And one of the, the guy from Midland I S D, Midland or Glavine I S D, I met with him at a vocational graduation. And guy had been up there for ten or eleven years as their I S D superintendent, and he was telling me, a superintendent doesn't really get an opportunity to run the district the way, with culture change and things until he's been at it for six years. And right now, because of what you said about everybody's different thoughts, ideas and all that, we, and COVID, COVID went, and we were at three, now we're down to like, just over two years. Two years, and how can, I mean, just think about it, if you're, if you were Ford Motor Company and you went through a s- a a C E O every two years, could you be successful? Well, we sure can chase off superintendents real quick. I mean, that's pretty scary, but we buy stock in Ford Motor Company, cause they're stable. And our stock is the kids.
Yeah, and I guess, my, my overarching comment here is not that we, we certainly value, we we value all stakeholders, right, but to your point earlier, we're not gonna make everybody happy.
You won't.
We can't, we certainly cannot, but we need to, Ken's earlier point, right, we need to to rise above that, I'll call it, noise, even though it's not noise, because it's important feedback, right, but we need to focus on what's best for the kids.
It is how you blend it all in together, and with that, we're gonna take a break, even though I know I took a job at Cal. Thus, re- re- uh, we get back to our sixth time.
Sixth time?
Sixth time.
Oh, wow.
That's why, wait, you got through your first page? Thomas, I have you guys out waiting, goes pretty fast, I guess.
Be never again.
So later, so we had Chad Curtis.
Oh!
Oh, baseball player, yeah, I'm on the news, if you look Google me, you'll see me on there. That's the one I'm. That was, that was, we had, was was, so the whole situation was like, we just thought we could handle it on our own, we could talk people into handling it. So we kept it down low, and we really should have addressed it out, you know, you got, once in a while you gotta, very, very large, sure, that's a lot easier, and air it out, nobody knows what's going on. But what happened is that his daughters, Chad's daughters, were as popular as the girls that were molested, and it was just created this, we looked at the loss of students, and I said, and lack of, there's only so much you can say, but I also realized that the lawyers worked for us. So I, me in the suit at the time, I wrote a lot, I wrote out what I was going to the news with, and he said it to the lawyer, he said, you can't say that. I go, yes, yeah, I'm going to, all of a sudden we had a counter call, and the lawyers, it wasn't until then that the lawyers found out they worked for us. It was, it was just ugly, that would have been two thousand eight, and that was, it was pretty challenging, it was, um, oh. And school board are always made to look like, no comment, whatever, and and so, well, friend of mine, always said controlling your narrative, if I don't do that, you know. If you could control your narrative, you can, you can own it, you just, uh, and what they were doing, you were being controlled, someone else was controlling the narrative. So after we got through that, we had the toughest, eight or nine, we had really, really, like, tight of hand process, and that is probably the toughest, and the sting to come out, you know, ever here, cause we're frustrated with titles, so we made sure I had, I had to, 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 to start the year, with, with, with mandatory recording. I mean, that's, that, that's written still, that's written in the policy. It was, it was a pain. Oh, that was even close to, yeah.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, so, we had the opposite problem, we have.
Sixty-seven or so, then help me drop out.
So it's like, I know, like, yeah, so we're, so we're kind of, we hired a super tenor, we got a, we got fifteen seven. Uh, no, our issue in Ioni County, we had no, because we had no, we had no, no. So we just, we had a really good group, every year. None of the, all the farmers, I just, I just, science people, but they bought up all the farms, they don't understand.
I just, so when I said, uh.
We got, Ioni County's just kinda, we don't have.
I don't, I don't remember how. The one was funny.
It's gonna be an A S M R board meeting. To the last year, I would say, I would say you would have thought, and, 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 you'd have thought, you'd actually wanna try to buy it, to be some type of land, and then they could have developed, do it. Nope, we'll do that, there's, and it's, so all of Ioni County, saying, you get over to buy it, very, 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 it's, it's, you to pick up my house, or my house. I'd pick it up, and move it to an hotel, after all, it's been about six hundred acres of that house. We had the most dirt road. And they can't, so, no, and they pay. Instead of the town shows putting out, we did it Friday, and they chose to do it. Yeah, I know, just in my town, we got ten miles. So you're gonna test other fifteen dollars, so it's pretty bad.
Yeah.
You can tell me if it is, I can't answer. Yeah, that's good. Downtown G R. What's the difference? Oh, okay, and then that one. Okay, so, just in case, okay, that doesn't make sense, right? Okay.
Yeah, we do it on a weekend, because of the deals and all that, so, we forgot to do it this Saturday, only have three weekends left before you go, yes, you don't wanna screw it up. Right, and, she hugged.
Oh, fire you, you ready, and I was never watching you. I, I was shocked, so I'm coming on the railroad tracks, I saw that brood, and I go, where's that? This is, back way, getting home, um, all the way to place. Fast, I wonder if there's any way to fast coming from Hudsonville anymore. Using all sorts of fancy words.
Say what?
Saying all sorts of fancy words.
Oh.
I didn't know you guys were by a monk farm.
I was really. Frank, I need to catch you to the beginning, what district?
Lakewood Schools.
Lakewood?
In Lakota.
Oh, okay.
So we, there was a, I don't know, superintendent back in nineteen sixty-seven, recognized what was already happening back then, that you had all these little schools, so we took in Clarksville, Woodland, Sunfield, and Lakewood, Lakota, and he went to each one of the boards and got them convinced they need to pull all the resources together, cause the end was looking pretty bleak, so three, four of those schools only had graduate classes of like, six or seven by that point, and just if they didn't do, I couldn't believe, you do that today, oh my gosh, what happened? Um, but, I mean, they just tore down the one, Schoolwood, Clark's, the one old high school about four years ago, and it had like, two classrooms in the gym. I mean, it's just pretty amazing, you know, the bad thing is when these places, cause it's how we view things, back then, nobody viewed all those pictures and all those, you know, the graduating classes as anything, so some of these schools, those all got destroyed, we had to save the ones in, um, Woodland, that school's like nineteen, twenty-something, still operate out of that one. And then the other one is, uh, Sunfield, but we ended up, when we consolidated, we put it upon ourselves, we wanted to buy those properties within two years. So we got probably not the best price for them, we knew, I mean, I'm gonna be a druid by schools, and sitting there for fifteen, twenty years of churches, they just, you know, worked out. One of them now, so actually, the guys got block at the Super apartment complex in Clarksville, it's phenomenal, he did a really good job on that, really good.
What was the square mileage, Frank, that we consolidated?
Uh, we're about two hundred, uh, we're about two hundred square miles, it was, we were at one time the second largest or third largest mileage district in this state. Some of it didn't make sense, it was like, one day they're sitting, and Sue was, get those kids over that one, I mean, it was like, within ten miles of this other, and they were twenty miles from us. This wasn't, it wasn't right, but, that's the way it worked out, and then we were rural, well, in our situation, big farmers just got bigger, and like I was telling you, Ken, in that, our district doesn't grow, so we're kinda. So we're kind of plateaued now. Cause now the city's projected us twenty thirty, only have eight hundred kids in our class, in our, in our school. And then we were maintaining, I talked to them, they fourteen hundred, which is up two hundred fifty higher than we thought, so. Okay, you guys ready? See, see, I saw you looking at your clock there, so got that down. Okay, moving right, right along here. Okay, so what is a way you guys could create an environment that ensures that commitment to directors are in best interest of students? Okay, someone from this side. Third, yeah. Create an environment that ensures all that commitment since, uh, directors are best interest of students. What are some things you guys are, how, what are you guys doing right now to do that? Cause two of you said, we're not. He said, we're doing okay, doing good. One said, we're doing great.
So here's, here's my quick perspective on this one. There are a lot of things about teaching kids that I just don't know about, right? I am, I am not a teacher.
Well, you're the experts.
Right, so one of the things that I do, I just did it this week or last week, I've been during parent teacher conferences. I was in the, in a building. And, uh, met with, with my teachers that my, you know, my kids have. But I talked to other teachers about some things. One is a new math curriculum that we're talking about, right? I just asked some teachers about their thoughts on the math curriculum. Because we talked about it at our last board meeting and I wanted to hear it from more people. Right, so when it comes to what's the best interest of our students? I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that I know at all times what the best thing is for students. Cause I'm not an expert. But what I can do is I can ask experts. And that's within our district or doing research on other districts, you know, those sorts of things to make sure that, that our commitments and directives are in the best interest of students.
And I notice you do a team approach on the curriculum and that too, and solidly put the programs together and all that. And that's one of the ways, hey, who, who always involved in the decision, you know, how do we come across that decision? And if it's going through the steps and it goes back to the method again, you know, you guys got the method, that's how, you know. You know, just, is it? How does it help everybody? Value difference opinion does not a different, I.
I may make a comment on.
Yeah, go.
Part of it also, I mean, we use data.
Yes.
Data pulled together by the superintendent and his staff to assess how we're doing in certain areas. Um, continuing to use that data and, um, really look at it and analyze and say, gosh, it looks like maybe we're getting down here. We're doing well there. What's, what's the student, the students that are struggling with it? And I know that's a, you know, key activity from, and stuff, evaluation of other areas.
Do you guys use NWA here or not? You know, just some stuff online?
Oh, these, these stuff.
Starts, starting. And, and both those are, I mean, there's so many different things. As long as you have something consistent that you're looking at, it's, it's there. I mean, that's what it's there for.
And then back to Andrew's point, um, our staff, our teachers, they're the experts. And so it's our, our roles aboard the, I think, to say, hey, what can we even do here or there? Like, you can tell us, cause you're.
You've got some phenomenal teachers from one of the stuff I saw out there. Holy she's. There's, there's. I would give in both my lays to have a teacher. They're giving up here a lot of these kids a lot more than what you guys think you do. Pretty phenomenal.
Real quick, just to add to that, right? From a business perspective, right? I wanna hire and attract the most talented people I possibly can in my day job, right? I think as a board, we wanna do the same thing. So if we can't get our stuff together as a board and other people see that, right? Like, we wanna make sure that this place continues to be the school of choice for great teachers.
Cause you guys are the leaders.
That's right.
And that's what they look at.
That's right. And, and if I, if I'm a, watch what I say here. If I'm someone who has options about where I'm gonna go to work, I'm gonna go to a school. That's gotta figure it out. Hudsonville does, let's keep it that way, right?
It's aligned.
That's right. Yep.
So let's go over to four. Value difference of opinion does not let differences. Like, hold on, there's, it goes back over here. Let's just get to the. Different perspectives are not respected. Uh, and then this other one, you plan this excellent method. You guys are using surveys, I saw that. Uh, when you shared all that non-unanimous. Uh, and then you get a little bit, trust is likely between some of our board and between some of the board and superintendent staffs as a result of the past two years. I guess, what is the reason, the lack of trust? I mean, it keeps, keeps coming up in there. It comes up, it comes up, and the, and the people come walking up to tell you what they think about stuff. What, what all caused it? And what's the elephant in the room? Or do we just wanna fight and argue all the time? That's.
Mr. Davis, I think maybe you could speak to that.
Well, I'm happy to speak to anything.
You're being biased, and I'm working for those.
I'm just a client guy. I, I think actually the board is united on the direction of the district. I think that we have phenomenal teachers, I think being corrected than we have. We've had differences of opinion on some ancillary items of correction, like the, um, the ruler program. I don't think it's been coming up again, but we had a lot of, uh, dispute over that. And it was a, it was three, four vote, I don't know, three, four votes. But, you know, um, I think on the whole, the district is moving very well ahead. And, uh, if you get into the classrooms, the teachers have been fine working, they've been fine building. Leaders have been working very well.
See, I think my issue with this is you guys only took this test about three weeks ago, four weeks ago. So it hasn't died. Hasn't, it's not, it's not this amoeba. It's just, it's, it's still swimming around. It's still alive. It's like, it's like the movie Doom. You got amoeba and they all attach it and they run farther, they eat the spice and et cetera, et cetera. If you guys didn't know about the Doom movie or the. So, but there's more than that. I mean, we gotta get, that's part of it. I think we're being a little bit dishonest because this trust thing is a big issue. And, and, and I think we just gotta say, how, even if we don't wanna bring it up, how do we start today? I, I put you guys all on ropes cars and they had me all jump into each other's hands, but. But from a trust issue, but how do we fix it? I mean, how can this?
You know, I, when we go into the buildings, we have the sore signs everywhere and the O stands for own it.
What's that?
Own it. Hey, uh, they must say, own it. And I think that just in my time here, there's been times when we maybe need to just own things. Say, you know, I screwed up. I said something wrong. Did something wrong. Will you forgive me?
You said what I was looking for.
It's an expectation that we have for our kids.
I'm gonna give you guys a great example. I did some really stupid things. I was the board president within four months of being appointed. And I took over our, our one room in our house. That was our room, we got a gas building, it was going great, and we converted it. And my wife goes out and I got flip charges. Twenty flip charts stuck all over the walls, cause I'm trying to figure out how to fix everything. And I'm a solution provider. I like fixing things. I'm gonna figure it all out. So I went and recovered, did it again, I got it done in ten, then I took it down five, and I got it one. And then what I found out is I made a lot of mistakes and I made a lot of assumptions. There's nothing wrong as a board member to say, I messed up. And doing it publicly, I actually publicly apologized to two board members, cause I handled it wrong. And that was my comment to start the meeting. I gotta bring this out right now because it's bothered me for a while. And I just thought, oh my gosh, now I'm a human being. You wanna go ahead and tough, cut stuff down, it, there's nothing wrong with owning it. We all make mistakes, we're human beings, it's just who we are. We all make mistakes. Sometimes you come up with the wrong words, sometimes you say the wrong things, sometimes you look at someone the wrong way. You're on videos, or anything's possible now. And someone, I mean, I had one guy that his feet would move. And someone made a comment because they were at the board table and his feet were moving. I go, oh my gosh, people, that's what we're gonna watch, is their feet moving. But, but, but if you own it, if you guys make a mistake, just say it. Hey, I messed up, I apologize. There's nothing wrong. What it does is brings humility. It brings trust to people too.
I look at, we're the only people in our district that everything we do is on camera. Basically. So it's a tremendous, uh, opportunity for us to model behavior. Students, staff, otherwise. If, if we can't own things and ask for forgiveness and, um, and if you can't give each other grace, how does that set the culture in our buildings? If, if we can't.
Yeah.
Be vulnerable enough with ourselves to make mistakes. How is a teacher going to be?
And it is hard, you're sitting at that desk. I can talk like it right now, but I remember, I mean, I'm like, hands were, my hands are sweaty. I was breaking in a cold sweat. I didn't wanna, but I knew I had to do it because I had a, you know, um, I have a, a large faith background. But I knew I had to go and get off my chest to make me feel better. I, I needed to be, be contrite and how I believe, be gracious about that. And, and the effect, the positive effect it had way outlaid the negative effect of it. Cause it shocks some people. Some of those same people you said that wanna go ahead and they're looking for everything, they're listening to noise. They're like, why'd you say that? I had you right here where I wanted you, but because you apologized, they, they just lost, they lost their control. They go, wait a sec. We're human beings and it, it's a powerful tool. Like you said, to own it.
I think one of the other things that, um, the other four newer members of the board, Andrew, oh, you four. Let's see, Barb has been here for a while, but you've got three. And Barb is newer compared to the standards of Mark and Ken and even myself. I don't think they really had, uh, understanding of what our board was like pre-COVID specifically. Um, but also pre a couple of situations that happened. Um, and because of that, um, I think Ken and Mark and myself have a slightly different perspective on how boards were run or should run and the relationship between, uh, the board and the superintendent and the central office. And there have been some comments made, um, specifically about trusting the employee we hired. And as our, whatever former board member said, I'm just gonna rip the band-aid off, okay? When I had two board members that had made it clear at some point that they're not sure they trust our superintendent, that's a trust factor for me. Because as a board, we have given them a highly effective rating for the last four times. And to me, that's one of the issues I have with trusting several of the board members. Because if that's their feeling and if there are board members that believe that some of us must just be led by the pied piper because we believe everything that our superintendent tells us, that's a comment that's made. It's hard to trust people that say those kind of things. Um, and maybe I'm the only one who feels that way or notices that's what's happened. But it's really hard for me to get past that when there's been an apology. And to me, those comments are inappropriate considering the level of Dr. Vanner Jack and the ratings that he has been given.
Thank you perhaps to bring that up. Does anybody else wanna comment on that?
Yeah, I am specifically stated in a meeting that, in fact, I think I used it in the context of, I said, Ken and I agree pretty much on everything that he said and I said. But one of the differences is, is that he trusts everything. And I'm not saying that as a negative, that Dr. Vanner Jack says, and I, and I don't have that trust. And I don't have that trust because of some interactions that I've had. That, um, it, it, you said we have one employer, right? Sometimes I don't believe that Dr. Vanner Jack understands that we are his employers. And sometimes when I'm bringing things up, and, and I, and I, it seems like I'm not getting the feedback that I would be getting from someone who is at least on the same level.
So what do you expect for feedback, I guess?
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna get into specifics.
I need, well.
No, I'm.
Because if we can come up with a system.
I, I think, and, and I said this numerous times. I have the utmost respect for Dr. Vanner Jack's ability to run a district this size. I think he does a phenomenal job on the, uh, finances, on the bond issues, on being everywhere at, at every time, it seems like. Um, but there, there are some issues, there are some big issues in my mind. SEL is one of them. A deep.
Hold on, I don't, I don't do acronyms.
Okay, well. Social emotional learning. And, and, and books, they, they, you know, and everybody has a right to their opinion on what they think is right on books that we should or should not have here, okay? Those are the issues. And it seems like sometimes when there's not an agreement on those types of things. And I, and I'm not, I'm not saying this about the board. I'm saying this about the community. The, the, the equation between disagreement and hate is not the same. Just because I disagree with someone, doesn't mean I hate him. I just disagree with him. And, 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 and there are some things that I'll, I'll be never agreeing on. There are some things where I may change my opinion in a nuanced sort of way. But, but I, I'm, I'm not going to disregard the things that are going on all around us and not just in Hudsonville, but all around us and getting closer and closer to Hudsonville that I think are extremely important to children and to parents and families. And, 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 and unless someone can change my mind on those things, I'm, I'm not gonna change.
So on that social emotional learning, you don't understand that part of the education?
No, I, I understand that. I think that there are, there are things that we do in that that aren't helpful to all the students. And, and, and Mark mentioned it earlier, we had a four to three vote on that. You know, it was, it was, it was a, a vote that was, um, months in coming. And, and those are, those are the thing, once it was, it was resolved and voted, I didn't, I haven't said anything else about it.
Okay.
But, but as far as me stating that there are things that I don't, I can't, I, I like being honest. And it, it, I, I don't think you should slam me because of that. That's just the way that I feel. And, and, and those things may change. Um, also when we talk about the evaluation, you know, one of the things that I said about this evaluation was.
Yeah, I wanna, okay.
Well, but, but I mean, if you want, you said you wanted.
No, no, I just, I just.
Okay, okay, so, so when, when I was looking at that evaluation thing, um, the parameters in which we had to evaluate. I, I mean, I was at a, um, on a, what was it? Highly effective, I think was one of them. Okay, that, that's where it was. But when I was looking at the things that I had to, that are the most important things in my mind to a leader of this magnitude, I, I felt those, those didn't even scratch the surface. I had a number of other things that I would be looking at from a leader that, that weren't quite that high on my list. And so, I mean, that's, that's, that's the way it is. You know, now I, I'll give you one more example, then I'm, I'm gonna keep applying. I've had several people over the last couple who say to me that, how do you think the superintendent is overpaid? And I smile and I say, absolutely, positively not. Because I've been in meetings where he's got this going and this going and this going. I wouldn't want that. And, and I've had positions of a lot of authority and a lot of pressure and all that kinds of. I, I wouldn't want that job. And so.
There are too many people that do.
No, well, once again, though, the ones who don't know. You know, the ones who don't know.
So how, I mean, I guess in this, I really wish, there's not an easy answer to this. I don't expect seven oh, but as long as we're not just voting just to vote, just to say no.
I think we could have gotten to seven oh though on SEL. The issue wasn't SEL. I think if you were to ask each board member, I don't wanna speak to them, but I think every board member supported social emotional learning. It was the program that was selected. And that, that goes back to one of the sides, it was number five or number six, where you look at consensus.
Okay, yeah.
A number C to build consensus. I think we could have gotten to a vote of seven to zero. It was the ruler curriculum. There were other SEL programs. When we looked at all the data and, and when we looked at what the teachers wanted, at, at first there, there, and, and I don't remember all the specifics. If we had gone with a different program other than ruler, and there were many other ones, we could have worked with consensus and. we could have worked with consensus and we could have gotten, I believe, to a seven to zero vote.
So, okay, so if, when you're going through those situations, let's say, we'll just use that one as a same example. How did you, you know, so usually when you have everybody with different opinions, usually the board president in most situations will always ask, Doug, why, what do you think is the reason to pick this? Cause at some point, when you see it's getting hostile or we're not getting a solution, he already knows it's time to table it. Instead of dragging it, because what happens is people start getting angry and everything else like that. Could have been controlled by, there's three key things to get the chant, um, one of the things I learned through the first board president's workshop and second board president's workshop I took. I wanted to know how to be more effective. And one of the things was just ask a soup. So if you're trying to buy some time or if you see the other thing that you have ability to do as president, when you see you're not getting it to everybody, you say, you know what? We're just gonna table this and talk about it at the next meeting. Cause then when you see you're going down this path, and sometimes I've been in there where you're going down a bad path. It just, and then everything's getting personal. You have the ability to table that. You don't have to make decisions and call all the Calvary back in and say, hold on here. We're not gonna create a little bit of order here. Let's go ahead and find something that everybody agrees upon. I've done that with numerous superintendents. I've seen other board presidents do it. You just call back, it, it's your job to call back in. And just say, hold on, let's, let's table this. Let's just move it over here. We're not feeling comfortable. I don't, don't feel it. I'm not feeling the seven oh vote. This is very crucial. Cause some of us aren't, aren't, don't like it or whatever else. That's where we gotta bring it back. We gotta recognize when we got something that is that causes, you know, causes people, seven people to show up to the next board meeting. It's not that you don't wanna answer. You're, you're being transparent. Hey, we, we just didn't feel we had the right vote or we, you know, this is pretty serious to all of us. We don't like that program. Let's just table it.
Frank, um, I think we pulled back for two years.
Okay.
So the problem wasn't the, the board, board president, whichever one of those, I think it was called back.
It was in the middle. The vote happened, you know, it was two, it was transition and then the.
But it was never, another option was never offered. I'm, I'm always, I'm always, I don't know if I've ever seen any good come out of a four, three vote.
Yeah, they don't.
On a board or a church or anybody else. And I think it's time for the leader to back up and say, listen, let's find something on which we all can agree. And that's, that's the issue that I have about that.
Yeah, but I just think we gotta, but that comes from the board, cause he takes the direction of the board.
Yeah, I, I came in right in the middle.
Yeah. And that's why I said, I think it's about pulling back. It's still up to the board. Cause the superintendent works for you guys, but it still comes down to sometimes you just gotta back up.
Yeah, I think.
You weren't ready, technically you weren't ready to vote.
But it probably comes, it comes back to your point about, um, all stakeholders having a voice. All stakeholders had a voice, one was just louder and had a little bit more conversation with individuals. So I, I can't say we didn't spend enough time. But I do think.
I wasn't here so long.
No, exactly. So again, I think that we spent more than enough time. In fact, there were some board members who didn't want to vote on it until the new group got in. So there were a lot of dynamics going on, but, um, it is a very good example of the dysfunction that we've experienced over the last couple of years. And that is a touchstone for some people.
So if we can do it, well, if you guys could do it different, what would you do different?
I, I, if we could do it different, I would ask that we go back, we look at other programs with the goal of trying to get consensus. I, I believe that we all want SEL. We certainly all want what's best for children and I think we would all support SEL. The issue was the program that was selected.
So did you pick? Just, just to, just to add some more details. I disagree with your statement about us not being ready to vote for that curriculum.
Oh, yeah, no, you said it. Okay, you're fine. I get a curse.
Sure, I think the, the amount of time that all of us spent researching that particular curriculum, talking to teachers, talking to principals in this district and outside of this district was immense. I'll speak for myself. I mean, hours and hours and hours and days doing that, talking to people in buildings. I think the data, the majority of all the teachers in the district supported it. We're not gonna talk about all the details, but the majority of the, the members of the community and the majority of the members, uh, majority, sorry, the majority of the teachers, they all were on board with them, right? And so we just had a very similar discussion last week about a math curriculum, right? And nobody asked questions about who developed the curriculum, you know, what they stood for politically, religiously, et cetera. We didn't ask any of those questions, but we did in this instance because it was important to some of us. So from my perspective, I think, I think if we were to vote again today, I don't, I mean, we probably have a very similar outcome. Um, we just disagreed on that, you know, and that's okay, you know?
This, a lot of it was a random cry.
What's that?
They're just getting some, no, it just became.
We seen a random cry for.
Yeah, I, I, it sure did. And I, I think too, there's a lot to be learned from that experience too, even the process. And I think it goes back to our relationship with you and, and with central office. I mean, yeah. Spent a lot of time on that one. Lost a lot of sleep over that one. I think there was not just the curriculum, but the process too, from my vantage point. Um, probably could have been improved. I know it was, uh, and again, I'm coming in right in the middle of it. That's like our first real vote we have to do. But I, I just look at giving all the data that I could have. Because I knew how of a hot button issue this was. I think it was a lot harder to get the, the, the data to be able to parse through than it probably could have been. And it could be because I'm new and there's, you know, contentious time, but I think that's where we've gotta try to kind of build that relationship and trust with central office and with Dr. Vanderjack. So I don't have to work so hard to, to get the data. I can't tell you how many surveys went out about that curriculum and just hopefully we don't have to go through that type of process anymore because the process could have been different.
And I think the reason we had so many surveys and so much data is because the board asked for it, right? The board said, board said, hey, we wanna know more. So we compared gear, like based on the pilot program, all that kind of stuff. We're getting into the weeds here probably more than you want us to, Frank, but I think this is an example of, this is an example of those disagreements, right, and the trust.
But the other part though, we're openly discussing it. We're not throwing stuff at people. We're not fighting. We're not, that's to me what the goal of this. This, this section is more about that than anything else, that to be able to talk as adults and, you know, some, you know, things that you learn in the process that went with it.
Well, you know, the, the, four, four voted for, we voted against it. Never ever once did it go through my mind that what in the heck are they doing? I, I thought that everybody, all seven of us, as Andrew said, did a lot of work and looked at everything. And I mean, I, I had some very pointed discussions with, you know, with a couple of people. And yet I don't disrespect what they did. And I, and I never, I never questioned their, um, ability to be able to, to vote like that or said it was evil or anything like that. I was just adamantly on the other side. But since we had that vote, I have never once said, you know, I, I wish I knew what was wrong with Andrew. What the heck is Nick thinking or not thinking? Not once. And, 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 and all of us had, you know, several conversations about that. So I didn't, I don't disrespect people because they voted. It doesn't mean that they hate me. They just thought differently. So, you know, I, I don't, um, but I, but one of the things that you said, Frank, that I think is important is that perhaps as the, as the president, maybe you have to take more responsibility, more power to just say, you know what, superintendent, we're gonna sit, we're not ready for this yet. We're gonna sit back and I'm pulling this. And, 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 you know, and maybe there would have been five people who said, yeah, I'm in favor of that. I, 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 I wanna talk a little bit more about some of this stuff because frankly, there was a, a data. There was a, a, a survey that we got from the HEA ten minutes before we voted, which was much, much different than the data from three months earlier. That was, that was troubling to me. That was troubling to me. But as far as anybody voting the way they did, I, I don't, I don't, I don't minimize you one bit for that. Because you looked at it.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, even through consensus, you can use that time, you know, in, in colleges. I don't know what anything that was going on. But you can use that when you see that, that all there. Just take the time. Say, hey, what else do you, but ask, what else, what other information do you need to make a good decision? Cause sometimes you can get information overload. And, and you're gonna go ahead and you're gonna look at it, look at it, look at it, look at it. And you just gotta, you know, it's a gut check. Hey, this is what we're going with. Too, because I, I know it might be black today. It's gonna be white tomorrow, green the next day. So you just gotta make a decision. Hey, we're gonna try to do this this next time. I mean, I've seen some boards just to change lights to LED lights, taking seven months to go ahead and just change them to LEDs because they didn't trust the people that were making the presentation that. And I was like, oh my gosh, this is pretty easy. Here's a cost analysis. Here's this, you know, everybody was going through it. Heck, it saved the district a quarter million dollars a year just going LEDs at no cost, you know, and so.
Just a question for, for Greg. Greg, I'm not sure, I don't remember who was present, you or Barb, but I'm not sure if the board president would have had the power to simply pull back and say, we're not gonna do that.
Board president always has.
Freezing my frame says to you.
The board president always has.
Well, well, hold it.
You, you can pull it from a vote. Because if you don't have consensus, you can say, hey, everybody, I just gotta table this for the time being.
It was, just to be clear, it was set to be voted on in December and it was polled when it was like, we weren't quite ready. We wanted more data and we have a new board coming on, so let's wait. So we collected more data, waited and pulled it. And that would have been the third time we pulled it.
And it depends, as a board, if we set our SOAR goals, which are three-year-long, and as part of those SOAR goals, we say we need to establish something. We can pull it back, but at some point in time.
You gotta do it.
Right, because if we gave our central office or superintendent this direction.
Sometimes you're not gonna keep everybody happy. And there are four threes. I just gotta, sometimes you can't avoid it. I know someone's gonna win, someone's gonna lose. As long as everybody leaves in support, hey, and they get this one, you know what? It's not the end of the world.
Hopefully we can get better at that.
It takes ten years. So.
Yeah, I think because of some of those, if you will, divided votes that we've had, there are certain groups in our community who feel certain ways about certain members of the board, right? And that only continues that sort of rift, right, on, on issues, unfortunately. It's just the way it is.
No, the stand by is just, school board never was meant to be political, right?
Exactly.
It's not, it's not. Was never, ever, ever meant to be political. And for some reason, through COVID and all, we was only being able to watch TV and sit at home and do Zoom classes for kids and everything else. And I'm sure that experiment, I don't, I've seen everybody's M E A tests after the year, everybody went back to school and, you know, tried to, am I in school this week or I'm not in school? And hey, by the way, we gotta look at this video camera and see what kids were by that kid that had COVID. And now that whole room's gonna be, well, wait a sec, my kid was not next to him, but they were on the bus. We're like, oh geez, there goes all of us. And we were healthcare professionals for two years. We forgot all about schools. We gave everybody opportunity to forget about what we're supposed to do.
You know, that, that isn't unique to a school system. Uh, I'm an elder at a church. And the, 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 the issues that we went through in that organization and, and other forty other pastors that I taught to, every one of them, without exception, did this is the worst thing that I've ever had to deal with. And so this isn't, this isn't.
No, no, but.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but it isn't, it isn't just, you know, the school, but everybody had to deal with that kind of stuff. And, and you're right, right, right.
It just, it was things happened that we just can't take, you know, it was, it was the worst experiment ever. I mean, so, so, um, so again, you just gotta find systems that allow you to go ahead and build that trust. I, I mean, so, moving on. Uh, we talked about disagreeing, handle disagreements. You guys have said it here. I, I think I heard you say it. Uh, hold on, I forgot. Greg, Greg, thanks. Uh, Greg, you, you said it a couple of times and I've noticed you've been very respectful and say, hey, I don't mean to ditch on you or anything else like that. You know, hey, that was how you believed, but you didn't. I know it's, one of the positive things, you're not like berating someone right in the middle of the meeting. You know, say, hey, I totally think you're not, you're off your rocker or something like that. You know, it's about respecting and even saying that, hey, I respect your opinion. We don't agree with each other. It is not, you know, it's okay sometimes. We're, you're seven different people here. That, that's what's kinda cool, trying to come with that general idea. I guess, I saw this deal with controversial items. And I gotta deal with conflicts about, they're all kind of the same thing. I really, really, really thank you guys. And I gotta go back to the DIS thing. I think you guys gotta learn how y'all communicate together. That could really help and it can be a fun exercise, I don't know. But it just, I think some of you probably have done it through how that person is, how that person communicates. Are they a numbers person? Are they an influencer? Gonna try to talk them into everything you got? Or are they a person that's just gonna sit back and not, you know? It's how you can communicate more effectively with each other. And by doing that, you create a cohesive team. Uh, how, I think all of you have kids here, right? If I'm not mistaken, whenever all you lie, I was two. Okay, in the district, right? But all of you have had kids, so. And you had that one kid that you had to communicate this way with, and you had this other kid over here you communicated totally different with, right? Well, that's how we're all, the same thing. And so we just gotta learn how to, you know, we don't have to be hanging out and everyone is spending the weekend together or cou- as couples, but on the other end, how can you still go ahead with a mode of respect and then deal with each other? You know, and that's what, what's nice about the DIS. If you, if you understand that someone is an influencer, how do you get them to say, hold on a sec, let's take a look at these numbers. I wanna show you, yeah, you're all on board, but this is where my concern is at in there. And they're gonna say, oh yeah, you know, that's how you work with each other. Any questions? No?
I guess, I'll just say real quick, I just appreciate, I mean, I've picked up the phone and called every single one of these people in the last month and a half, you know, and just chatting a lot. Like we're all, we're all humans, we're all people. And I just, I, I have a lot of respect for everybody in this room and we have great conversations. Maybe Mark's been longer than I've been. I'm, we had breakfast, but, um. I'll just say when it comes to communication, I mean, I'm the kind of, I'm the kind of person that's like, hey, like not trying to build consensus outside of a board meeting, right, but just talk about what's on our mind, right? And I think that helps with the relationship, you know, one-on-one, but it also helps, you know, when, when times are tough, right? When tough decisions need to be made, if you've got that trust and you have that relationship, it makes those tough times easier.
You know, I wanna, I wanna say something publicly here. I, a couple of weeks ago, I got a call from a board member and I wanna commend Ken. Ken called me and, um, he talked to me, he talked to me about an issue. He, I mean, I could have maybe said, what the heck do you think you're calling me about? But I didn't. I said, I was very gracious and, and sincerely gracious because I appreciated him taking the time to call me. I appreciated him saying to me, Greg, you know, I, I think you could have done this a little bit better. And I told him that. I said, Ken, thank you very much for calling me. I didn't, you know, I, I said, uh, and, and I followed up on what he, what he asked me to do or what he, what he, what he said. And so, you know, that's the kind of stuff where he put himself out there a little bit because I could have just said, you know, well, who do you think you are? But, but I, I, I was sincerely appreciative of the fact that you reached out to me about, about a concern. And, and I told you that. And, uh, and so those are the types of things that, that people don't see happening.
No, they should see what's on the video.
Right, right. And he, and so, I mean, and we, we have some disagreements, but going back to what I said earlier, I respect him as an individual who, even though he thinks differently than me on some things, doesn't mean he's wrong and I, and I'm right all the time. It's just, that's the way that we feel. And so, anyway, thank you for that phone call, Ken. I appreciate it.
Thanks for the follow-up and comment.
But that is part of what, what just happened there. That's part of coming together as a team, you know, with differing opinions and reaching out and stuff like that, so. But that is part of what, what just happened there, that's part of coming together as a team, you know, with differing opinions and reaching out and stuff like that, so. Say, fracture to go is already improved, but just for the service. Again, it's about, like you said, on the smart take ownership, where you guys, you know, look like you're dis- disjointed. But even on that four-three vote, you can take another vote, which is one thing they strongly re- represent, that we will accept as, as a group, you can ask for a motion, and you can take that motion up as to saying, I'm now asking for a motion that we're gonna support the decision of the majority of the board. And that's where you come up with that seven-o vote, even though you had a four-three, that you're gonna accept all deci- you know, one of the things it says on, on your, on your, um, on your board norms, right? Wait, your board norms, your. That even if it was something that you didn't agree with, that you would leave the meeting in agreement with it, right? You can make a motion, and it doesn't have to be on the agenda, just like seeing on superintendent votes, you can make a motion, I, if someone can make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we will support the decision of the board as a whole to support this, yeah, you might get a six to one or seven, you know? But the idea is that it shows you're a team, that, yeah, you might not have gotten what you wanted, but also shows you're gonna support what you've already signed on your board code of conduct, that you're gonna go ahead and support the board, board majority. And that really takes some, that takes some power away from the people that want to go ahead and, and mess you all up. It doesn't mean you weren't, you didn't take the other vote, but it just maintained, guess what? We're a graceful loser, hey, we're gonna move on, we gotta get other stuff done. Does that make, does that, but you can do that. And so, it does get you a little bit out of that four, when that four-three does happen, or three-four happens, hey, okay, back to drawing board again, we're gonna find something different.
Well, I think, for me, it's, it's a given, no matter what the vote is, I'm gonna support it. I mean, that, when I came on this board, you know, no, no matter what I voted, it's, it's, it's a group voted one way, then walking out of that door, I was gonna support that vote, okay?
So, and, and I get what you're saying, but what's happening in today, it's the image that it portrays to every, it's really sad, because now we're, we're so concerned about how it looks, and, and realistically, there's, there's, there's some things and some people that just like nothing better than disarray. And, but by going ahead and attacking it that way, hey, you know what? We all agreed to, we all took this, it, it's more about, like, that you still support each other as a team. That's what you're making of it, I was, it's important.
Some of the messages.
Like, nobody kicked the middle linebacker out, or nobody, so-and-so did, he's still my favorite line, the guy that dropped the three passes, you know, um, from, from LA Rams, but he's still part of the team. You know, he wasn't kicked out of the team because he dropped the three passes.
You know, but, but Frank, I gotta tell, there are, there are votes of conscience, Frank.
Yeah, that's fine.
And so, I, 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 I don't really think to go, and this is my, my opinion, my thought, to go back and have a seven to nothing vote, and a four to three vote, I, I, you know, that, that one, I'm kinda lost with that.
Yeah, the, the only reason is that you support, that it goes back to what you signed on that, that piece of paper, that things. That, it just back to that piece of paper, that we're gonna support the, the majority of the board vote, that's all it does. So it's not, the idea, it's, it's.
I understand.
That's what it is, okay.
Because we have teachers that think that we don't support them because we hold it no longer, which is the furthest thing from the truth. And it's almost like now, even with some people, I think I could stand on my head, and they would, they would change what they thought of me.
The tribute is shit.
But you gotta start somewhere. Mississippi River, River starts somewhere with that.
Something like that would help.
Yeah, but it, but it does, it does do that, because, hey, hold on here, so. Okay. All right, we're all, hey, guess what, we're on to number two, and we'll just take a quick break, because then, uh, five minutes early, just get back in seven oh five. Some of this, some of this we're gonna go quicker on, 'cause some of the things we just covered, it covers a lot of the stuff of the rest of it, okay? Just letting you guys know. And then you guys have nine jobs, eight jobs, personal lot of jobs. So, so SOR stands for success, okay?
You're talking about a different SOR for that? You're talking about the student version of SOR?
Oh, there's, there's different versions.
Be safe, be safe, own it, act responsibly, and be responsible.
How safe is table in, like, the whole period of school? When we were in school, we did everything that wasn't safe possible, you know, for our behavior, and it was a little more difficult than it was today. But now, you gotta worry about, you gotta make sure you don't let people crash you, so you don't worry about shooters you gotta worry about. Did you get put in highlighter on all your windows so everybody's shooting? So who did you do the business for then?
What's that?
Who did you do the business for? Do you have comments?
This means you're already signed it.
Through Pat Ryan's subscription then, or?
I'm just saying, I'm keeping it the way it is.
Oh, that would explain some of that.
Yeah, 'cause they saw some, uh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm a pretty regimented person, you know, I. I think if you're that way, it's easier to adapt. 'Cause, 'cause if you don't do it, you don't get what, you have the winter time, we're gonna have a switch. Won't get light out till, not until the morning.
Specialized in music stuff. Let's start it.
Neither night, 'cause we were out there. I'm talking about a doughnut shop. And they just use regular flour, those potato bags.
Not at all. The theater.
Yeah, I, I was simple, and then I was there once for late night chariot, and it was. So like, it's at least like, Jack Center Place, and I had like, open mic. The first time I went there, it was, it ended up being a doughnut, I, I had no clue, I was just. Something like that. That's what I go with. Flash California, when January was flying, they had a new policy about. So, they bought up all the supply of events. So their demand. And then it was like midnight, like, okay, you're wrapped up, so I have to go home, go to bed. And then it started hitting my points, and then he's like, I don't know, maybe next afternoon, so and so, and I'm like, oh, I forgot. But, I mean, we don't want to, you said, so I walk out, I mean, but he does that. But that's not a sustainable solution there. I've been to two times. Uh, but they are closed up, they're, it's something, all right.
Yeah, great.
No, I guess I might. If you're reading out that, uh, microwave hot water condensate. I guess, actually, I completely, I'm gonna talk about this process. Couldn't everything oral rhythm locker, I gotta put in the transporter, and you truck it that.
Yeah, I mean, that hot water condenser, because every man who had the water pot or microwave inhaled it, and they determined that some of his issues were because of that.
Yeah, and just think, we all heard it here.
No, that's your, you just got another wrinkle in your brain, for what you're doing.
Wow. Nobody's mentioned oral rhythm locker in the gas air skillet.
Yeah, now you gotta get off the real.
But then you put like, you table screws with real butter. Way better than table screws with real butter.
Can be helped.
Everybody's better with real butter.
It is.
So, we're, we're gonna go to this one, this is a pretty quick one, so you guys, um, commit to high vision of expectations, you guys are on board there. Ensure the district has comprehensive performance base. I want to let you know, what was really unique about your guys' stuff, this is the one everybody does really, I got reds and oranges on. So it was kinda unique, because you guys have your thought processes about the leadership thing, but you guys are like, right on, like, I wish I could share this to other people, because you feel what you're, so the information you're getting, this is in there, that says a lot. You're, uh, define clear goals for student achievement and affect, review progress toward the long and short-term goals. And I was looking out there, you guys have, you know, I was looking at some of your board meetings, you have the reports, you had the different department ads coming, telling what you're working on, what they're doing, what the results are, way to go, way to go. Uh, that also means you're giving your superintendents some direction to go ahead and, hey, what's expected in that, that's how that comes up. That doesn't, isn't just like a miracle, you know, ding, I got a mention one, and ding, there it is. That means through, through time and effort, you've gotten to sending you the information, know what's going on. Um, get back to focus on issues that impact student achievement, I wanna get into that a tiny bit. Because what's really kinda weird is we're all good up here, and I don't understand why that would be different. And ensure indicators of achievement are established, so you must, again, we, up here, we're saying define clear goals, we're doing that, but down here, you're saying ensure indicators that define are established, so I don't understand why the difference. Those are two, basically the same thing. Does that make sense?
I, I think it gets back to the points that Greg has made and others have made, that some of, when you say, um, that's in the best interest of all students, not everyone on the board agrees what's in the best interest. Um, I think it also speaks to the things that some on the board would consider to be non-academic. Um, so for instance, the social emotional learning, um, something to do with, um, diversity. They may not necessarily see those as student achievement, um, indicators or things that we should be focusing on. So in my opinion at least, I think five, six, and seven all, um, are wrapped up into that little ball.
Yeah, we have decisions in what, I was just, what's best for students. See what the comments are. Is it regularly used, scorecard is publicly focused upon strategic, and, and I'm not gonna go on to one, just 'cause, also we're green, they're not like orange or anything. Evaluates compliance of Michigan law, who did the one on that one? I just, for the heck of it, 'cause you guys are, you're using an approved, state-approved M A S P D thing, so I saw that, that one said, needs improvement, is that, because that is changing, by the way, so test scores, as soon as she signs it, it's going to twenty percent, right? Twenty percent for students, what's that?
Local.
Yeah, lo- local only. And then, uh, then they're also changing, uh, there's only three, there's a, uh, hi, was it, highly.
Developing margin, effective.
Yeah, so effective, emerging, highly effective, those are the three, so there's no more highly effective anymore, starting, well, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Right?
Yeah.
No, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, but you're gonna be required to do touches, touch at least one thirty-six months to a review, that got voted out.
No, it's not part of the.
Oh, it isn't, so hold it off. Okay, so, I, thanks for telling me that, 'cause I teach superintendent evaluation, and they didn't tell me that the other day, so, right? It's a work in progress, and we can't, we can't come out with anything yet about even changes how that looks and all that.
The rubric.
The rubric hasn't changed.
Yeah, the rubric's obviously. Uh, and then celebrate success at all levels of system that improves district performance, and, you know, yeah. I think celebrate success is our thing, our board is not fully around how did you want to achieve it for all students, value, they're just testing out the top set of responsibilities for his staff. That's a little preliminary dashboard, you, you guys got a dash, I saw your dashboard, that was easily bindable, by the way, and congratulations, you guys were even having one. One, a strategic plan, two, a strategic plan you're looking at. Uh, I've got a lot of people that did theirs in twenty-twenty, that haven't looked at it since, does everybody know what March seventeen, two thousand was?
That was when they declared the pandemic, yes.
Ruined a lot of people's St. Patty's Day that day. But, but March seventeen, twenty-twenty is a date that'll live in memory, what were you doing when your schools got closed? You know, that's like, I was like, spring break, it's canceled.
Thirteen was the chart, most of the schools canceled since Friday, thirteen.
Seventeen is when they shut down the recipe.
Seventeen to shut down the bars.
Yeah, and the whole economy, everything got shut down.
But the schools were shut down on thirteen.
Yeah. So, we too much on, you know, at times, it seems that at times we focus too much on issues agenda, not as much on student. And also think it's sort of a bit more transparent, so what, if it isn't strong, what would you guys like to see? I mean, you guys know, if you do the strategic plan, if you're not strong in certain areas, what would you like to see if it isn't strong? Like, uh, I mean, you got goals, and that's what I, I don't get.
Well, I think that, the, I mean, I'll speak for myself, the strategic plan is strong, well-planned out, thorough, thoughtful strategic plan. And so, I, why are you asking that question?
Because, I mean, I saw it second, 'cause, 'cause of the.
Oh, you're in the bottom, oh, oh, okay, so then.
That's 'cause I don't, I don't get it, 'cause all the sa- the five down up above, you guys have got measurements and everything else, but then I get this, and I go, eh, you know, so, 'cause I saw some of the reports. You know, so, because I saw some of the reports, I mean, you guys are addressing the parts that you're short, or you're, I mean, I've seen the plan. I mean, you guys got on the website, areas that, you know, hey, we got, we, this wasn't as good, we know we gotta work on this. According to my wife, I mean, she's a school teacher, that fourth grade becomes that fifth grade, becomes that sixth grade. And then just what happens is you get trying to justify in a way to get it, get to them.
I, I think this is one of our, our strengths.
I do too, that's what I'm trying to understand why, what the issue was there.
I just think, you know, in, in just.
It could be, I don't know, I don't have any idea of knowing. I'm just good through it. Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Ding, okay, gone. What responsibilities? Okay, I got, okay, so who, what are, because some of you guys are CBA one-twos, level two ones, level two, most here. Um, so you understand you're the policymaking body, correct? That's one of your three jobs, finances, policymaking, advisory, and the superintendent. That's the three. That are in there. Focus on policy issues or making referred, uh, how do you guys do that now? Issues that come up, district-wide issues. What's your method of doing that, I mean, because it's a seven dollar issue?
Number four?
Number two.
Q two. I think there's, there's context, and we've had several, that you don't have. We've had several conversations over the past year or so where, um, you know, a, a board member spoke to a person from the public or something like that, and that's maybe been perceived by certain folks as going around Dr. Vanderjack. You know, whether that's accurate or not, that's a perception, I think, on some of these topics.
One, one, one of the things that you guys can get used to it is by running communication, copying the board president, and if it's going to the superintendent. It just gives everybody the loop, and it allows for a one-way, you know, so there's a two-way conversation, you know, there's two-way. But also, if all of a sudden you see the same issue coming up, then you can bring it up. Otherwise, it keeps people in the loop of, hey, here's an issue that's coming up. But he needs to know there's, that there's no surprises, and if you guys aren't having surprises, then you're already doing that. Right? I mean, is there like major surprises you guys are doing, or stuff like that? You know, because that's always the big role that, the soup's got enough, you know. Running a thousand people, I don't know how you do it, because that's, that's tough enough to get told every little thing that's happening in the district, fifty-five, sixty, eight hundred kids.
And in my opinion, is that between legally board groups, that it's somehow by the superintendent, um, there's a lot of information, you know. Um, so you have that, you have, um, emails that come out, or communication that come out, if something were to happen in the district.
Yeah.
There's a bus accident or something like that, and there are texts that come out. Um, I think there's a level of communication that, um, again, in my experience, when I'm screening myself, I'm not seeing that. So I mean, that's actually a very high level of communication in the district of board members. I'm, I can't think of a time of the surprise.
I think.
I'll do it, Corvina.
Yeah, I think I may have done one of the, we're looking at two still, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think there are some folks on the board that go to the superintendent with all issues, and there are some people who, that are related to the district, and there's some people on the board that don't. They'll go to somebody else. And so I think that's why I.
Just make sure you follow change immediately, so that, because otherwise it causes a problem. I had one board I was working with, they waited till the performance evaluation, till any issue was given. Needless to say, he was only there for a year, went to a new district, because he had gone through two years of it, and he said, that's it, I can't. It just, you know, you got issues bringing up as they come up, but you just don't wait till the bitter end, tell anybody.
I think this is maybe where micromanaging, um, comes in, and some of that again is because we have had, in the last several years, new people come on and trying to understand the distinction between the board's role and the superintendent's role. Um, and thinking about whether it's a policy issue or a management issue, and what that looks like.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that takes time.
Oh, it takes a long time. I, I know when I started, I thought it was gonna run like a business. You got assets coming in, you got money coming in, you got money going out, and you got this. And then you found out it was a government entity.
Yeah.
And then you found out, there's money coming from places I've never even heard of, that you're only allowed to use. When I, it took me forever to get there, it was a forty-three, forty, I don't even remember. And then trying to tell the other board members not to use acronyms, because I don't understand it. And then after three years, I'm using those same acronyms, and I got new people coming in, and they're looking at me and they're going, oh, shoot. So I started, so then, I, this other board I was working with, I went back to one of the board meetings later. And so every time someone bring up a number, someone say, hey, what does that mean? So that way the, the, the way this, the audience has no idea where all this, and then you might not have it next year. Nobody understands you don't have it next year. You know, it, but I knew it, I, it took me a while to realize it was an X-nose type business. It was definitely, schools are not a business. I, it is, is so far from the truth. I, I mean, we measure by graduation rates, uh, we measure by attendance, we measure by grades. But we, again, we don't measure by, hey, by the way, in ten years, are you successful? You know, so when you see all that, that, that was really kind of amazing to me. So it isn't like, you know, you got a car coming in, you put the tires on, you sell for fifty percent margin. You know, that, it doesn't work that way. And, and our margin is, is how well we do as board members, you know. That's your legacy.
Yeah, to pick up on Don's comment, I agree, after sitting here, we just wanted to think about it. That's, that's, I'm a woman of threes as well, that, and that's the, we're governance body, um, and we're not a management body.
It's hard, yeah.
And understanding that differential is, is harder than it exists in time.
Yeah, I, I think what hap-.
Not a management.
It's more like, to, to go with what you're saying, we're more like a highly, uh, let's use Ford Motor Company, brought that up, e- easier. Nobody's gonna ask, uh, what's his name, let's leave someone else, Barry, about, um, the, well, I don't even remember who the Ford president is for anymore. But nobody's going to tell them, hey, by the way, you don't make enough cars on that line. You know, there's not enough, and, and et cetera, et cetera. It's just, he just manages through num- you know, what the numbers are, who's this person, I gotta translate that back down. And that's what's hard when I got on the board, is just understanding my, I had policy and, and how, and the methods of how we got to that, to get the information. Because there's a lot of trust that goes around with everybody, that's just, you know. Okay. Uh, po- provide your policy by, by which the board deals complaints from the public consistently uses the process. We kind of went through one way to do it, you know, when I said you can address it in the board, that's one thing, and just because people need to be known that they're heard. Because that's how we treat, we treat anybody. Uh, the other way is if it's something that comes up and it's, so when I look at it, if it's some, most of the stuff that I saw looked like was after you guys. Uh, but I saw, um, the thing about, uh, bullying came up. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with saying, stating in there, hey, we got this policy, we don't approve of bullying. You know, this is what we're gonna do, and here's, you know. And then basically all you do is say, Doug will just show you, hey, here's some of our, 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 um, here's some of our processes that we do when we find out that there's bullying. And that's it. He can send it over to his person, or his administrator, or whatever, to take care of it, and become, you know, just want to slide it off. But you gotta go ahead, your policies are covering most of these issues that are, that are stated, that people bring up. Because you, you know, there's something in there about bullying, you, you voted on it, you vote on it every year. You know, and, and you take that seriously, because you don't want any kid to get hurt on your watch, that's for sure. Don't want to make the news, for bad things. Um, but that's another way you can do it. So if someone comes and talks about it, say, hey, we have a pop, you know, this is some of our plan, or, you know, but it's things like that. You just push it over to the soup, and he just, he addressed, he delegates it to someone else. And even on his report, you can just send to the report, hey, I addressed it with that individual, and showed him, you know, this is how I put it over this person, or, you know, we, we communicated what our, what our goal is. Uh, willingly embrace the two seas, uh, we already did, I guess, about time of that. Uh, timelines for district goals, you guys are doing that, that's why I was surprised the one-on-one's showing up. Uh, because I saw you guys, I just watched the movie you guys did. I mean, you guys are doing smart goals, just kind of remember they're measurable. Okay, don't get caught up in.
Yeah, I think, I was not one of the red or orange ones on this one. But I do, so this is about the board, right?
Yeah.
Dr. Vanderjack does a lot of things to support the board. Um, maybe, I'm just speculating here, maybe there's something that's saying, hey, as a board, are we setting our own goals in parallel with the district goals?
Do you guys do retreats or anything like that?
No.
That's another good team building thing. See, that's what, I mean, some of the greatest things we had, we got rid of, we forgot. So anytime you can get a retreat together, invite, you do a nice thing, you know, just do something to build team building. You know, just something.
Can you do a retreat though, with?
Yeah, 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 can do. Just don't, that's where I did my distest. So, go to a place, do a distest someplace else, if someone wants to show up and watch, go ahead and leave board for four hours, if that's what they want to do, that's fine. But the idea is to build a team, a team of people, you're not trying to keep anything hidden. You know, it, it isn't there, that we always gotta meet, but you can always pick a retreat, hey, let's go do the, you know. It, it might be going to Arnes for the day, and just build it, as long as you're not negotiating, as long as you're not deliberating, anything like that. You still gotta post it, hey, we're having a board retreat, we're gonna go up and down the water slide at Arnes. You know, you can do that, just don't deliberate.
And it's also a public meeting.
It's also a public meeting. They had to buy their, you know, oh, big comments is a little bit different before you go down the slide, but.
Does that make sense though? I think some of these, like, number, like, number nine as well, where your systems are available in place at all levels. So I think, again, I'm not a orange or red one here either, but I think that it could be, maybe some people, we are, and speak up if you do, think that, obviously, would you certain, with Doug's leadership, the district and the staff do things one way, maybe the board thinks we're differentiating between, you know, he does the more personal thing.
Right. Because the other thing you can do too is, I've seen some boards just do basically that annual meeting, it's after your, it's after your, uh, after your organizational meeting. Just what some goals you guys want to get done that year, what are some things that you want to work toward that might, as a group, that align with everybody? You know, what are some goals you'd like to get achieved, you know?
And, and that's actually one of the things I've been working on since, since October. We had talked about, um, putting together some, certain goals. And one of the things that we've been working on, but it's taken several meetings to do so, is reviewing our code of conduct.
Yeah.
And so that was one of our goals, we haven't gotten to the end to say, okay, do we need to make some tweaks? Um, but we have started on that road of, um, informally or formally creating some goals.
And the public's still invited, they can video and all that stuff, it's not, you know, but it's a little more relaxed, you know, it's still, but. It's just a way to get to know each other sometimes more on a personal basis, because you're not deliberating through some of it. You, like, I've seen people do a dinner together, and just have a dinner at, at a nice place, and just talk, and just get to know each other, just don't deliberate issues. You know? So you can do that. It is allowable. It's, you know, but come on something different. Um, use structures and processes to keep the district strategic. You guys are already there, so you're already the touch points and all that. Oh, I understand that, I, and I'm spending time on a budget. So the budget, which is a little bit damp, it's a little bit different, but I know you guys are allowed to change it three times. It is a projection that changes all the time, it's like, you guys don't know that, right? Um, provide feedback, that's why, monitor just a regular scheduled timeline. This is why, because I was, you guys are, on the other hand, you guys said you were all doing that, and so I was kind of like, we went down a different, rather. So you, how, how are you guys, do you guys use a Google calendar? At all for things that, like, reports you know you gotta have by a certain time? So they're already preloaded? Okay.
Or, or that's crazy.
Yeah. But you guys, you could do the same thing with the board, you know, budget approvals always this time, I didn't know. I know some districts have certain reports they do all the time, like, you could put out their superintendent midpoint touch is X, or it is already pre-scheduled on interior meeting agendas. Just make it easier.
I think you touched on a really good point, because sometimes we have lost track of certain timeframes, not anybody's fault. Um, but if there was, and if there is one, boy, I'm gonna really kill Doug, but if there was a board calendar that said, as a reminder, like, you know, Barb would have talked about, by such and such a date, we do this. It would probably be helpful to possibly do something like that, so then it's like, all right, that's right, don't we have this coming up? I don't have to bother Barb, or I don't have to check with Robin or Doug.
Yeah, it's already out there, because like, you, you got an ISD report, right, that's gotta come, does, does that one send it over here?
Yeah, we don't have a, a board calendar.
We got an ISD, so you can help.
We don't have a board calendar, I know this year for the superintendent's checking points, I have dates for those.
But if you put them on the Google calendar, I guess, if you have regular reporting that was close to our touch points, or you wanted to remember, uh, I don't know.
Well, and, and our store updates, you know, we get those occasionally, but then if it's in our minds, like, when was the last store update? So that might be something that we can take a look at.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, because, because Robin and Doug are phenomenal at, you know, keeping us up to date on all that stuff. It's proverbial, we hit, hit by the bus, who's gonna pick it up and remember, and we don't have all those days summarized, so.
Right. But it just helps you with, you know, the agenda, kind of, or whatever. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, board must work toward better service, we talked about.
About half hour, you can have a moment.
Okay.
We're at, we're at home.
Okay.
Thanks.
I like how it's one hundred.
Oh, you know, that's. Board effect, was that the other one I had, hold on, yeah, that was. Hold just a second, I gotta go back over here. Because you guys scored well on that one. Board effectiveness. So I'm gonna skip over, I'm gonna come back to this one, okay? I want to let you guys know, the data-driven decision-making, you have the right data to make, that was good, that was good. Use appropriate data. And this is, I mean, a ball could be a, are, I'll believe you're using the right data, combine base decisions, comments, and questions. What were you guys thinking on five, six, and seven on the other ones? That's what I just, uh, what kind of data? And as a council committee for continuous improvement, because you guys posted on your strategic plan, that's why I didn't get that. I mean, it's like, you got the measurement already in there, but do you understand the measurements there?
What, what page is this?
Uh, that is page eighteen.
Page fifteen on your handout. Oh, no. No.
Oh, he's gonna make this. Data, no. Data-driven. I skipped, I really skipped that one. I'm going back to that other one.
Okay.
I'm doing easy.
We're page nineteen.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, so the headers on eighteen, questions are now eighteen.
Yeah, so I, I guess, use appropriate data for district-wide decision-making as a council committee for continuous improvement. Combine perception data with other indicators. That was on there, base decision comments and questions on objective data. Is there something in there, I'm not, because what's really kind of weird is up here, distinguishing data meter, district-wide decision-making. And data meter, tactical operational decision, and we come down here, and this is like, just set the app, you're just set the opposite. Is it, did you read it?
Different light on mine.
I, I.
I think this goes back to, so question three is to see distinguishing what data and information we need to make decisions. That's why I read that.
All right.
Number se- number seven is, are we using the data to make those decisions? Or are we, or are there other, okay, things at play in how the board makes that decision?
Okay.
And this is, this is the, this is going back to, again, I'll bring it up again, the rules then, right? The data suggested one thing, we beat it to death, and now it's a, it's an issue. And it was a four-three roll.
Okay.
So are we getting, did we get the data we needed? Are we using data that we think we need? Yes. Are we using that data to make decisions? That's my question, does anyone else, does that make sense?
So this is just for rehashing what we just talked about.
I, I, I don't know that we're hearing from the people who are orange and red, but it would seem to be it goes back to those same things.
Which we discussed, or which we discussed.
I agree, some of my questions are just different on my packet than here.
Yeah, I think there's one missing on the screen.
It's, it's the size. It's, it's the size is different, so this one goes to seven, this one goes to nine, but yeah, everything's a lot.
Well, on the page nineteen that I have, see, it is slightly different.
Question two is nineteen, right there?
Set it.
Go back. Back, question two, question five.
Question two? What page are you on?
Sure, student, I got a one, a four, and a two.
Wait, no, no, are your data just driven decision-making?
Yes.
The question's the same, the, uh.
This is why we requested data, actually.
Yeah, I'm reading the data. I know this is right, that's, that's not my share, so that's a share. And I sent you over, yeah, so that's the only option.
The, to, to next point, question two's data, it's slightly different on here. It's two, instead of five, it says four, and then there's one red.
Oh.
One, one red. The next one's the same, the next one's right. And then Q six is. Q six five is not the same.
What is this one?
That's right, Q seven is right, and Q seven is red.
Q six is.
Q seven is not, Q five is not.
So is Q seven, so I apologize.
Oh, seven is.
Seven is correct.
Seven is correct, sorry, went back.
It's just two and five, I think.
Two and five is correct.
Okay, so what is two showing here?
Two has.
It's just one, five, two, and the one is red, so one red.
Four.
But it can't work, cause I get, one, five, two means I got one too many.
Sorry, one, four, two.
Okay, alright.
And question five is actually one, one, three, two.
One, one. Oh, we're, so I apologize, cause I sent this. So let me tell, my experience with this is they sent it over to me in a Word document, I couldn't go out and pull it up and put it into my PPTX. So then I had to reset it to it, so I, I don't know why.
That's only, that's only.
Okay, so I apologize, I had a time, so see, my data is already wrong, and I apologize tremendously. I'm owning it.
Can you turn the next page?
Yeah. So then, use data to assess outcomes. Okay. Uh, one, two, three, and five are recognized needs. I mean, I don't, I don't understand the ones, can anybody explain that to me? Cause it looks like the balance is on the right, other side. Satisfactory, I don't know. Someone in a bad mood that day.
I, again, I think this is an area, I think collectively as a board, I think we're really good at analyzing the data. I mean, I, I think we're great, I mean, this is a perfect example, Frank, there's been a handful of times when we've been given information that was incorrect. And, and again, a perfect example, there was a great presentation in January at a work session here. There's a slide of the data. You know, again, a lot of time goes into preparing these PowerPoints for a meeting, well, and I go, that is incorrect on this slide. And so then we just kinda moved on from it, so like, what is, what would, what should our response or expectation be on that, like, cause this is like a.
Yeah, cause it happens, it's happened, I hear you saying it, just ask Key in the next meeting, can you get, give us the under data, just so we can see it? That's it, cause things happen, if you don't, don't, I mean, that, that's, uh, can we bring it up at the next meeting, so you just show us that data?
Or, or email, is it appropriate to just?
So that way, it's okay, cause you're doing it in open meetings, and just do it that way, just carry on. Mistakes happen, I mean, look at mine, I mean, I just found out I got two questions wrong, I saw how that happened. And the pages were right, so I noticed they were eighteen and nineteen, so it wasn't cause I slipped a different page.
I think you were just checking to see.
That, that could be a, evidently you are dad, your dad's.
From a process standpoint, Frank, just so I'm clear, from an OMA standpoint, would not be appropriate for them to send the slide to us after the fact.
No, 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 no.
Because it might be something made up.
Because, you're, I mean, it just. The more, yeah, anytime you're thinking about, the moment that OMA comes up, do it out in public. The moment you even think about it, just do it, that way, you're not hiding anything.
What was your question, Nick?
But whether or not the follow-up slide with correct data could be sent by email to the board after the meeting.
You're saying that would be a violation of.
No, it wouldn't be, because you're not delivering the information.
But let's just say, it might be advisable.
But you have a, you have an information savvy, uh, group here, so I would probably make sure I bring it up, hey, by the way, here's my dissing slide, and that's it. And, and he could still, he could still share it to you guys ahead of time, but I would just bring it up for me, he shows you at the meeting, you don't have to spend a lot.
We have the people at the audience.
Things happen. We're all given.
Cool.
And more critical, yeah, I mean, that, they said, they, they talked about the board. And said they, they, okay, board superintendent, we'll go back over this, other, to that one. Um, next one, next one, next one. Board effectiveness, focus the board agenda, issues relating. I mean, make sure when you're doing the agenda, that agenda is always about, more about the students. There used to be a study, people used to keep track, how much was dealt with operations and how much was spent on students, and some of them were spending ninety percent of their time talking about the budget, and ten percent of the time talking about things, just things, management issues, stuff like that. You guys spend more time talking about, hey, the kids got to this, and the data that they, that Doug's providing you, spend more time on talking about students' student achievement, so you're doing what you're supposed to do. When the fiscal stuff's falling apart, you're gonna know, there's gonna be reports, but you shouldn't have that happen. But spend more time about student achievement, how do you get all kids to be successful? We used to keep, right, I had some boards that keep track, and they put down their twenty minutes on this, ten minutes on this, fifteen minutes on this. So they could, so all of a sudden, that was student achievement, student achievement. If you can spend eighty percent of your time on student achievement, student goals, and helping them move up, then you're succeeding as a board, if you're saying all sorts of time micromanaging, and not talking about student achievement, and you're kinda, you're, you're doing the wrong thing. It's kinda, it's kinda like at home, you're like, hey, you're gonna do this, this, and this before I go watch that. You know, you just wanna get it managed accordingly, so you focus on students. Uh, conduct board meeting, effectiveness, means efficiently and effectively. Any suggestions there? You guys get a lot of people come to talk, so. And the, and the two that come to mind, and that was just the last video I watched, was the guy from Consumers Energy that came and talked, and you can't ever feel bad about telling him, hold on, he could, he could have talked. Just swing this if you're like, you're not gonna get back again. And I don't mean that rude. Maybe I am. But they're using as a sounding board, what he talked about for Consumers Energy, he could have just gone and talked to Doug and said, hey, I'll let you know, you're Lee Anderson for Consumers Energy, if you got a problem, give me a call. He didn't have to come to the board to do that.
I thought we had let everyone.
You can make the decision ahead of time, there are things, that was one of those things that has nothing to do. And that's one of those, you could pull them aside and say, hey, what are you talking, you mean, did he fill out a sheet, did he even come and talk? You had to let everybody talk, otherwise.
They all have a link that they can sign up.
Right, but that doesn't give them.
They're gonna talk about the link.
You, it, this isn't, some of the boards have things, that we're here to do business of the board, et cetera, et cetera. But where do you stop on who you let talk or don't talk?
I'd be reluctant to truncate that, though.
Okay.
I think there are more problems with each writer.
I feel we would be in trouble if we tried to.
I think that's a pretty rare, I mean, there's been, uh.
We had the person that's on the ballot for, it seems like, registered.
I gotta go like three times since I've been on the board.
Split between somebody who's coming to, even if it's to express strong opinions, I don't think you're, you're drawing a line more between if the consumer's power, I'm just here for the information.
Yeah, the consumer's power, the person running for office. You can't do that yourselves, so how many more people do you wanna have here? Do you want everybody on the ballot?
This fall, it would probably be hundreds.
And you gotta make, I mean, I don't know.
So who controls that? We don't.
I, I, actually, cause I saw what happened, I called Brad, Brad and asked, it's, it's how each, each individual board handles it. Because I asked him, he says, it, it is, it is a sticky wick, it isn't, but that people feel this is, this is a, a place to do it, where does it stop? I mean, I, I think sometimes it's about sitting with the individual, I say, you know, this is about school stuff? It isn't about elections, it isn't.
I don't know, the next time my power goes out, if it takes five days to come back from a lie.
But that's not what I mean, I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you gotta, that the ability to speak, and I'm not trying to take anybody's ability to free speech, so don't take it that way. With some of this, you, you gotta start questioning, would, okay, how many people are gonna be on November's ballot, do you want them all here?
I, I, I think this is such a, a unique instance, I, I really appreciate the, the feedback you gave us earlier tonight about kinda just humanizing our relationships, because for the most part, it's, it's the same group of people that speaks regularly, and I, I'd far rather build a relationship with them and, and all of that than the.
Like I said, I checked, cause I thought it was crossed, I thought it was crossing over.
I thought, I was sitting there watching, I thought Dr. Vanderjek planted that guy.
No, so that's, I mean, just, okay, that's just my opinion, so don't, I guess I called Brad just to make sure, cause it was just weird. It was just wild to me, cause I've never seen that happen.
I think that's, but I think it's a thing for us to keep in mind, because again, four years ago, we had COVID, four years ago was the last time we had a major election. We don't know between now and November, how many people are gonna come and speak. And so this may be at least in the back of our mind, thinking, okay, do we want to talk about whether or not we should at least say something when they sign up? Consider this, is this really just about school, we would prefer, and not say they can't, but let them know that.
And again, check with Brad before you do anything, just, because I was just blown away, I've never seen that happen, right, it's like the first time ever.
After that prosecutor came, I went and looked at our policy, and I was like, oh, technically, based on our policy?
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, and, and you know, and again, Cardy says, yeah, so what, but, like you said, if it's ten, for the next ten months.
Sorry. Ensure to sit, we did already get these decisions are in personal objective and professional, we already went through that. Uh, understand that is public, I wanna go right to there. Represent the entire community and refrain from making decisions based on special interest groups, and then understand that it's public, mind, and effective decision-making process is important as any of the decisions it makes. So I wanted to talk, we talked briefly about that, the four-three vote, one in the way about pulling yourself back together as effective decision-making process. It's okay to have split votes, just make sure you support each other as the votes, after the votes made. As it represents, to represent the entire community, refrain from making decisions based on special interest groups. That's, I don't know how you guys are gonna change that, that stigma, other than slowly start commenting as people are looking for everything that you breathe wrong or anything else like that, you just. Because, you know, I, I'm two companies away, um, we've had similar situations, but I went and addressed some, some groups that I thought we had to get a better understanding, so they didn't understand we weren't supplying, and they were cut short because they thought we were putting kitty litter boxes outside the doors, true story. We, we had forty ladies show up to board meetings, so I went, I knew the one lady, and went over, I said, hey, this isn't happening, you know? But remember, it's about all students, it's not about special interest groups, we don't have an ID or an R, next to our names. Any thoughts, questions? Board here, oh, board superintendent. So this is the last one, twenty-one, twenty-five. So create an environment that dispirits micromanage undermining the superintendent. How can you guys create an environment that doesn't undermine the superintendent? Cause it also, I mean, and then down here, work with superintendent, spiritual respect, open communication, trust, and confidence. Because if I showed you nineteen sixteen, if I go back to that very first, we were all, things were going really well. And then all of a sudden, two years later, we're here? It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You guys are like, three quarters way higher.
Well, there are some, um, there's been an election on the board between then and now. And, um, there are some on the board who, this is, this is, I think a big part of the crux of the, um, from the leadership that somebody there she talked about earlier, there's a, um, someone on the board who don't trust the superintendent, um, for, for whatever reason.
And that just blows my mind, cause if you give someone a highly effective rating, I, I can't. It just doesn't tie in together, I mean, that's what just blows my mind away, cause how can you not trust somebody you just gave a highly effective rating to?
If you go and look at that evaluation tool, okay? And so, i- i- in my, in my opinion, and I've done a lot of evaluations in the past, in my opinion, that evaluation tool is not fully appropriate for a leader in, in, in the position and, and with the many things that he's tasked to do, and he or she is tasked to do.
And what I would disagree with you, a- a- and, and, is that, when you look, you did, if you've already taken the board's self-evaluation, that was done through almost five hundred different studies throughout the country on how to put that together, it wasn't somebody sitting in a room and picking, I'm gonna pick this apple, and I pick this apple, and I pick this apple. It was all about, they went and looked at highly effective school superintendents throughout the country, and put that, that, that sheet together through numerous, numerous, numerous things. I mean, more so than, the typical evaluation to get at work, did you show up to work on a time? Yes, I mean, those questions that are on there are very, very specific and thought out due to data that was created over this big thing, and it doesn't look like my work ones either, that, that we do for our people, whether it's a service tack or someone else. And that's why I'm kinda having a hard time is, it's not your, but, so these thousands of, thousands of people put this together, it wasn't just, hey, by the way, grabbed it off the internet, and this is the new thing.
I'm telling you, in my experience, okay?
But yours was in business, and I think that's the part.
No, 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 I'm talking about in my, excuse me, in my experience of filling out that tool, which I gave our superintendent, my numbers at the end were highly effective, okay? However, I have had several different issues that do not portray in my mind the same successful level of a leader. And I'm not, I'm not making things up, I've got personal things that we, that I've had conversations with and stuff. And, and so it, it's, it's not that they're, it's not example and reality driven, that's my experience of what happened here. And that is why I may have graded, or I did grade it like this, okay? So I'm not saying that, you know, the, 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 um, evaluation tool is wrong, I'm just saying it does not encompass.
It doesn't meet your definition of a leader, if I can interrupt.
Right, exactly.
So you, so you might think a leader would be George Patton, that would be.
No, 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 no.
And I, I just picked up for that.
Yeah, it, it could be, I mean, I, I, I'm not talking about specific traits or anything like that right here, I'm just saying that was my experience in, in, in doing this project. And I spent a lot of time on it, I spent a lot of time on it. If I, if I, if I was trying to come to a, 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 a determination on my own, I would have found a way to rate him, if that's what I was trying to do, ineffective on that tool, but I didn't, I did it, I did it, you know, um, honestly, consciously putting, you know, a lot of thought into it, and that's, that's where I came up.
Yeah, cause if that tool was developed, I mean, because we used to use all sorts of tools, that would, would so be consistent for all superintendents, and that's why there's, I think there's two or three, approved by the state of issue that we can use for evaluation process. Was that Masvi tool, I think five D is the other one, is it five D or four five? Five D is the other one. But part of that was, is so there was too many, I think, there was, the reason that was come out is, is to be measurable, by the fact, these are the criteria based upon what they had gathered from knowledge everywhere.
And, and, and Frank, I've said several times this evening, I think that in so many areas, our superintendent does a remarkable job. There's some areas where I have some concern, and, and so that's, that's to do some.
Okay, and, and that's, and I guess that's where the thing is, this four-three is.
Frank, can I step in?
I mean, you can fill it out.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, I mean, our meeting where we went over, and we were working with Dr. Vanderdeck, and his goal went off the rails, a bit.
It did.
And, you saw that one?
I saw that one, that was three and a, three hours forty-five minutes.
Yep, so, so one of the things that struck me as I walked out of that meeting. Is we never asked Dr. Vanderdeck how we can support him better.
Yes.
It was all of us talking for three hours and forty-five minutes, yet the individual who we're tasked to support and evaluate. Was not a part of that discussion at all. So I think, you know, it kinda goes both ways, we need to do a better job of. Fostering that trust in the patient.
Right, because they're the ones that gotta buy into their goals, it's like when you sit down and work through an evaluation. And your boss says, doesn't ask you how you're gonna fix this, and then tells you how you're gonna fix it. What's your, what do you think is your chances of success, cause they told you versus you bought into it? I mean, we teach our kids to buy into what we tell, you know, there's times we say, no, yes. But to get them to buy in, we gotta provide a process, even at work. What are some ways you can increase acts to do this, one of you are a motivational, right? Speaker, it's on your website or something, somewhere out there.
I think we need to go back a little bit. If we're gonna talk about the SMART goals. For the first time trying to follow the process that NASB has identified, and we have not done that.
It is tough, cause I, I agree.
Yeah, trying to follow the process.
We could develop SMART goals, we just didn't, it's taken some help.
Well, so on Friday. When the board beefs or whatever came out, I brought up for the agenda, I thought we have talked about the SMART goals, we have talked about the strength of the evaluation. And I have resistance that is given. And, you know, we're not looking for a lot of SMART goals, we're looking for one or two.
That's it.
Dr. Vanderdeck came back with five, both Nick and I saw them and gave feedback. This isn't quite what we're looking for, but yet that's what was sent to the entire board. And I guess maybe at that point I should have said, we're taking it off the agenda, because this isn't, this isn't what we were looking for. And it just kinda derailed, cause it wasn't what. When we had Jay come in, the SMART goals are not things, at least my understanding, are not things that you're currently working on. Stretch goals, what do we wanna see more of that we're not seeing now?
Correct.
And that's not what we were given. So I'm trying to look at it different, trying to follow the process, and I feel like I'm given, like I received resistance.
Yeah, but sometimes, so I'm not, we got a non-employee at Masby, so I'd like to. Sometimes Masby comes out with this kumbaya feeling and all that, and they. I think it's about, when I think about it, it's not strategic, cause to me, the issue I sometimes have with SMART goals is what is the strategic plan? And so why are we gonna put more, to me, it's about more personal goals that he would want to accomplish than it is. But even then, I question that still, because you judge him based upon his evaluation, it's not, even when you go through that thing. It's not judged, there's no judgment about what is SMART goals or anything else, when you go through the evaluation, there's no spot for SMART goals on there. It's all about how do you do your strategic plan, and that's where I think there's a disconnect, and there's, and it isn't because he wants to be disconnected, in my opinion, it's just that, there's too many. I just don't, I'm trying to figure out where SMART goals fit.
There's a place for superintendent goals, those that place any interpreted as. District strategic planning.
Yes.
It can also be interpreted as, well, in addition to these things the district is working on. There are these particular areas that the superintendent says, I wanna base a particular focus on this. It may be overlap to strategic planning goals, they may be completely separate, I think it's fair to say oftentimes there's overlap. But there is that space on the form that allows for that, allows for that.
For that blend, for that blend, because they're, and to me, it's gotta be measured, they gotta be measurable to make SMART goals, but I think, some of the things.
But we were told no more than one or two.
Right.
Have five.
He's a high achiever. No, but it comes back down to. I don't think it comes down to any of the trust, you know, the thing is, oh, how, we've got an issue here we gotta work with. Because you guys, right now, you got one of the highest performing, probably in about three counties, you guys are in. One of the highest performing districts in three counties, I don't know how you can. You can't, you can't knock that, I mean, that says a lot. And to find someone that can manage fifty-five, you know, sixty-eight hundred students, a thousand staff members, that's even harder to find, effectively.
Right, and at some point, and we read the comments, there's comments in there.
Yeah, we're all there.
At some point, we have to say, okay, we've rated highly effective, sixty-one, rated highly effective. And you can, and there could be some discussion around that, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's the tool, and I actually think it's a pretty effective tool, I mean. You can disagree on that, but having done many evaluations myself, I think it's a pretty good tool. So we've rated them, the district is high performing, as I've pointed out for many times, in many areas. The team is high performing, the teaching, and that all starts with a high performing leader.
Right.
And so to, this is one of the fundamental, again, one of the crux of the issues that we have here. So to have this, this either overtone or undertone of. You know, we don't trust you, or I'm going to too tightly manage you, or something. That's, that's what makes your grab will win, to me, some point you go, okay, we gotta get on board, we have a high performing district, a high performing, as measured by the board. Superintendent, high performing staff, high performing teachers.
And it's normal to want to do better, so I want it.
And we always wanna do that.
You always wanna do better, you want, cause someone's trying to catch up with you and something else like that. But at some point, you guys gotta just say, recognize, I'm already winning the game. You know, if I'm already winning the game, how do I keep winning?
And there may be some things we can do to enhance communication, I think we've got some good discussion tonight, and maybe tighten up some communication areas. But this, this notion that there's this, there's this.
And the very first, right, the very first comment.
That is just not.
Is the crux of something we've dealt with over the last three or four years, and one of my comments in the very beginning, but I hope. That after this evaluation, we can move on, but clearly this individual still carries with him whatever he felt personally. And in my opinion, has not been willing to see the changes that have been made. And that becomes very difficult if that individual does not agree to move on.
I don't know what else to say other than, you guys, if I was to put a report card up against everybody else, and we can keep throwing districts at district at district. I don't think you realize how good you got it. And, and sometimes we dig when, you know, you just gotta nurture and grow.
And to your point, but maybe there's some compromise, I personally do not have an issue with the five old, I think they're good, solid. But maybe there's some compromise on that, that we can move forward with. But, so again, communication and some of the things we talked about as a board, this isn't about the superintendent's evaluation again, this is about the board behavior. So let's focus on that, but part of that board behavior is we have to move on. With our superintendent, who does an outstanding job.
Cause what's happening is, again, you gotta, how do you stop all those comments, you know, that's part of it, when we talked about it, you gotta. How do I explain, I had to explain to someone one day, someday you just gotta go out and say, that's it, I'm gonna start here, and this is where I'm going. And I can keep looking over the back, and it's not gonna change, and I've said some things, or done some things, I'm not real proud of, but I gotta go this way, and I gotta go ahead and just move forward. And, and you guys gotta make that decision, that's in here. And, and that might be as simple as, as stupid as it might sound, is go back to that seven oh vote. Again, that's where you say, hey, we wanna let everybody know we're in support of our staff and superintendent, you know, you just gotta say it, you know? You could, I could show you some really bad districts, and you guys who just, if you wanna go to the thumb, in some cities up there, that is, that, what they go through. Is pretty tough, and to me, where you guys are at right now, and have. I've lost some teachers to you guys. I'm not happy about that, I can't, and because they like it, because it's here, you know, I was impressed by. I don't know if you guys even paid attention to how many teachers actually have students that are in your district, that is just blowing my mind away, that means they believe in it. We were at three percent, three percent. I have a hundred, we have a hundred staff, that's three teachers, so. So, I mean, but I think you guys gotta figure out that, you guys gotta make decisions to start, and hey, we gotta get ahead here. Cause it's a changing world, and we don't wanna be caught out there, and another election year, who knows what's gonna go on with that? There's a lot of anger there, so. So I think we can, some of these communications things, one, one of the things, you know, I don't wanna keep beating dead horses, can we engage with spine and air? I don't wanna keep beating dead horses on eight o'clock, and it's not because I don't wanna stay longer, so don't, I have no problem, I can stay up here all day. But I think some of the things we talked about tonight, use that seven oh vote if you have to control, you know, go ahead and start from today. And, cause you guys all said you were respecting each other, we got somewhere today, so that's great, you know, just, just do it, you know, do it. I mean, there's a reason for the Nike thing, just do it. But, you know, it just, there's, I don't know if any of you guys remember a cartoon, it's, and, and when I, I'm gonna ask you guys to take it like, you guys will look at it later. It's when Bugs, not Bugs, Bugs Bunny, Dappy Duck dresses up like Bugs Bunny. And this dog grabs Dappy Duck, and he's dressed up like Bugs Bunny, he says, I will name him George, I will pet him and squeeze him and hold him, and make him look, be forever mine. And he treats, you know, so that's what I'm asking you guys to do, grab onto this, it's yours forever. Be, you guys gotta, you guys gotta create a legacy, that people look back twenty years from now and say, that was the best damn board I've ever seen, that school ever have. And they lay out the tools, and the necessary, did the necessary things to help my board twenty years from now run as effectively as we are. And if you can't say that, you shouldn't be on the board. Pretty simple, but you wanna create a legacy that starts here, and if that's tonight, that's the most important thing you can do. And all you can do is go forward from there, because, you know what, we're gonna be in those kumbaya world too, and if that's those rules, they're gonna come back and save you, cause times always get bad. All the time. And you're just gonna have those tools and that legacy to do that, because, and just don't listen to the noise out there. How many of you have, I'm gonna use that kitty litter thing, how many have kitty litters, and how many got calls from student, parents about kitty litters, kitty litter in their rooms? I was up at Serenac, and I asked them, I said, I haven't seen you have kitty litter in your room, and they said. Jeez, you heard about it too, I said, no, I just came up with it, I just thought, I'd see if you guys were, you know, it just was amazing where it can go, but, you know, being a leader. Isn't popular, not running popular, it's not about homecoming queen, homecoming queen, it's about. It's just about doing the right thing, it's cooler than hanging, it's the best job in the world.
You know, Frank, I wanna say, all of us are here believing we're doing the right thing.
I know it, yeah.
And, and I'm not gonna leave this meeting today, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity for feedback and all this discussing this. But my principles haven't changed when I walked in here at five o'clock. Till eight o'clock, and they aren't going to, and there's things that, that we're going to disagree on.
Which is fine.
Which is fine, so the kumbaya moments, you know, I mean, those are nice, those would be wonderful, but if we have disagreements, we need to disagree with respect.
Correct.
And that's, that's, that's what I'm working for.
And you can never give up your integrity and principles.
Exactly, absolutely positively, and so, you know, I appreciate that, but a lot of the issues that I had, the issues haven't changed at all. From walking in here and walking out of here, I do, I do appreciate the feedback that we got from everybody. And I, I truly. I can't, I won't use the word enjoy, but I truly. Believe that everybody in this room is acting out of what's best for the kids. And any four to three votes, you know, I, I, as long as people are, you know, voting their conscience and their principles and. And have data to back it up.
And that's, and that's true, I agree with that, on the board standpoint, again, the broader, broader issue that we're dealing with is this. Is this supporting of the superintendent, and the need to move on as the governing board of the district, to say, we support. The individual who's running the district, it's a highly effective individual, and yes, there may be disagreements on certain votes, I agree with you, and I. Think that's okay, I don't think there needs to be seven oh votes on everything, even though the vast majority of our votes are seven oh, I know there's been conversation around, we have two to four, we don't, we have a few. So, but we have to get a line behind the superintendent, the staff, and the teachers to move forward as a district, and that's not, that's not a vote thing. It may translate into a vote, it's the support of the administrative team that we have in this district. That's, that's what we as leaders do, and as a government body does.
It's okay to challenge, there's not.
It's okay to challenge, there's nothing wrong with challenging, we should challenge, we need to have a large, we need to hold our superintendent accountable. Not saying we don't do that, but this, 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 oh, I don't, and I don't, that is tearing us apart, that's where we have to move on.
So, back to, so you do have the ability, you know, like I said, for the worship thing. I'm, I'm a, for me personally, the reason I started off, because I, I looked, the pledge of allegiance is, that's why you guys got elected. You were able to elect people, you know, and that to me should start every board meeting, and I was totally surprised, and I would strongly encourage you guys to include that. As how you start your meeting, cause that is something that pulls everybody together, we are all Americans, right? And that's something that I feel very strongly, cause sometimes it pulls everybody, it's just the idea of pulling everybody back together, yeah, we have our flaws, but it's still who we are. And that's why we're here, we gotta take a vote, you know, and then, anything else, do, again, do the team building stuff, and if you get those board norms, go through it, when you sign them, that's signed, I mean. That means you're gonna abide by those, those are, that's your constitution, you know, how many laws have you seen go in front of the, you know, for our sake, the constitution that. Are still upheld today, because some people signed them back in the seventeen hundreds, you know, that's what that is, so you should have the same weight when you sign your name to that. That they did back then, I mean, you signed your name, live by it, you know, act it, and then build your legacy, you guys gotta get together. You know, start today as ground zero, and, you know, just move forward, so. Okay, any questions? Did you fire me, don't ask me back again, that's my.
No, very helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me to be with us this evening.
Oh, you're welcome, I enjoyed it.
Alright, we will do a roundtable, I will start with Mr. King Hall. Alright, I will take the motion for adjournment. All the favors say aye?
Aye. Can you guys just go through, put a check mark next to your name or change, I want to check your email. Sorry about that, go through that.